Well, it's five o'clock, so we'll start the meeting. I'd like to invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Glad you picked it up there a little bit. I was afraid the senator didn't think we knew it very well.
[laughing]
Roll call, please.
Strand.
Here.
Gary.
Here.
Grinberg.
Here.
Pepcorn.
Here.
Mahoney.
Here.
I'd like to welcome you all here tonight to the City Commission meeting. Just a couple of things have come up. Since our last meeting, I know the members of the public, the media, have been asking about questions about tax incentives that a majority of this commission granted FedEx at our last meeting. In these conversations, I think the point that has been missed and needs to be considered is that FedEx coming to Fargo will not simply be a relocation of an existing operation, but it's an expansion of operational services which will positively impact the entire region, including Grand Forks. It'll improve upon existing services, impact the broader state of North Dakota. With that being said, I too have some questions that I would like to answer directly by FedEx. I also want to allow the city commissioners to ask questions they have made in regards to this incentive package. As a result, I've spoke to the -- this afternoon to FedEx representatives and requested that a member of their executive staff who is familiar with this decision come to Fargo and be present at the next commission meeting on August 15th. I think it's important that we all hear directly from their decision makers on what factors led them to choosing to expand their businesses by coming to Fargo. They agreed to do so and looking forward to providing the information and circumstances leading them to come to us at this time. Please know that we have heard your concerns and be raising these issues directly and in public with FedEx at our next meeting. Now, the good news I have, if you all want to tap your wallets, Wally Hub -- Wallet Hub just gave a different thing on us. They said we're one of the nation's best-run cities. We're in competition with all the major cities in the U.S., New York, Chicago, Los Angeles, San Francisco. We place seventh among major cities for safety, thirteenth for health, and thirteenth for infrastructure. And here's the best part as a whole, we rank sixth overall in the nation for our city services. I think that deserves a round of applause for our dedicated City of Fargo staff members. And Greg would want me to include that they do fantastic in our community, far more. Thank you. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the order agenda continuing from item 33A under public hearings at 5:15, withdraw on item 35 on the regular agenda, and moving item 39 to beginning of the regular agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the July 18, 2016 regular meeting?
I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections to the minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items 1 through 28 with the following changes that we have made?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Gary?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Now, we're on a tight schedule only because we have public hearings and the senator has some places to be tonight, so we're going to try to accommodate both. So Commissioner Strand, when he came on to the commission, has some concerns about the opioid crisis in the community, and as many of the commissioners have also had that concern. We were very distressed early in this year when we lost several members of our community to the drugs, and we really are concerned about what to do about this. So John Strand wanted to start this off and start the discussion, and then we're going to invite some speakers as well. And John, I'll let you take over for this.
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney and members of the commission. Earlier this year, we all became aware of a crisis that's landed at our door here in Fargo, Moorhead, West Fargo in our region, and that's the opioid crisis. We've had an ongoing challenge catching up with an action plan and efforts to get ahead of this very, very tragic curve of events. And it's a very multifaceted, complex issue that we, as a community and as a broader community, face. It's people of all spectrums, all corners of life, corners, walks and corners of life. It's people of every socioeconomic status, people of all different ages. It's not your typical addiction challenge that we face with heroin. This one is deadly. And we unfortunately have this here now. Law enforcement notified us of this earlier this year multiple times and has apprised us of the challenges we face in a real, real sense. Now, it's time to bring forward the action plans or the beginnings and the formulations of action plans with regard to the public health, human services aspect of this crisis that we are indeed facing. So I'm going to keep my comments short, except to acknowledge that, thank goodness, we have such capable people in our community on all walks, all fronts. We have educators, we have counselors, we have medical community, we have service providers, we have leadership, we have the faith community, we have the law enforcement community, we have the public health and the human services communities, and then all the rest of us. So with, you know, it's going to take all of us, everybody affected with this. We may not all be personally affected as yet, but we will be. And we need to, we will, when it affects us, and you will all, we will all understand it's, in every instance, it's somebody's daughter, somebody's son, somebody's brother, somebody's sister, somebody's mom, dad, aunt, uncle, or neighbor. And it's that personal. And their needs are just immense, and it's our job to do the best we can for our cities and for our people. So to begin with, I would like to introduce Senator Heidi Heitkamp, who's been so gracious to make a few moments in her schedule to visit with us as a community and apprise us of some of her and the Senate's efforts and congressional work going on in Washington, D.C. Senator Heitkamp, thank you so sincerely.
First, I want to applaud the City of Fargo and really the entire region and all the people that you spoke so eloquently about, Commissioner, for the interest. You know, I think that it unfortunately way too often takes a crisis for everybody to kind of, you know, get that look on their face like, wow, this is really here, this is real, we need to do something about it. And so I want to first start out talking about the importance of law enforcement because I think we're talking about this as a public health crisis, as the need to treat addiction. We don't want to, you know, jail our way out of this problem because quite honestly, there's 1.9 million people right now in this country who believe are addicted to opioids. That doesn't count the over half a million people who are addicted to heroin. So we can't afford to jail our way out of this problem. We've got to do everything that we can to treat this as a public health crisis. But I want to mention, I think Chief Todd is here somewhere, want to mention and shout out to law enforcement because what we're seeing right now in North Dakota because of the decline in economic activity out west, I don't know how many of you saw the report on how much lower the costs are for these illegal drugs. Do you know what that means? When the cost goes down, the demand goes up. It's just the way it works. And if you don't have an active and aggressive law enforcement effort, you know, we can't supply-side our way out of this problem. I think that's a lesson we learned in the 80s and 90s. We cannot supply-side our way out of this problem, but we have to have the enforcer on the street. We have to have that deterrence on the street. And the work of the Grand Forks and, or excuse me, the work of the Fargo Police Department along with the drug task forces that are run out of DEA, along with the Attorney General's-led drug task forces are absolutely critical. They're a critical component of this problem. And frequently, for the addicted and overdose, they frequently are the first responders. And so, you know, as most of my comments are going to be talking about public health models, I think it's critically important that you not think, if you do this, that you can take money out of law enforcement because that is, that deterrence is a huge part of making sure that you have a community that is beginning the process and continuing the process of protecting themselves. I want to talk about two pieces of legislation, one of which has passed and the other one which I'm hoping will pass. The first piece is the Comprehensive Addiction and Recovery Act, CARA. CARA was passed just in the last month. And what it does is it basically says, we need a national strategy. This is a national public health crisis. Again, we can't jail our way out of this problem, and so we need a national solution. But interestingly enough, it doesn't say, we're going to tell you what to do. It says, let's have communities tell us what they want to do in a really cross-disciplinary role, and then we'll help fund it. And we'll eliminate some of the regulation that makes it very difficult to treat opioids today in America. And so what you're doing here in developing a regional and local strategy is absolutely critical to accessing the funds that are going to be available under that act. It is critical that we tell the story, it's critical that we not be left behind. Way too often, you know, you read about Appalachia, you read about what's happening in Indiana, you read about New Hampshire, which, you know, their crisis has gone to epidemic levels. We have a crisis here, probably not at that epidemic level that you see in New Hampshire, but we want to be competitive for these dollars because if we're truly working to prevent this from getting an even stronger foothold in our communities, we need to have a very collective strategy between public health, people who administer the programs, people who are dealing with drug treatment and recovery, people who are working within the communities, the faith-based community, our schools, everybody needs to be involved. And that's one of the lessons that I learned when I was your Attorney General back in the 90s and we were facing the crisis of methamphetamines. Then U.S. Attorney John Schneider and I co-wrote our meth strategy, which actually became the Midwest Strategy. Most of it was lifted from Midwest, and it really was a combination of good community policing, good enforcement on the ground, but also looking at how do we educate communities? How do we educate medical professionals? How do we educate city commissioners about what's actually happening? Because I will tell you, the one problem that we always have in North Dakota is we're pretty good at denial. That's some other big city problem, right? That's somebody else's problem, that somebody else is, you know, exaggerating it. You cannot exaggerate this problem in North Dakota. And when I did my roundtable in Bismarck, they had their first overdose that day. And so they see it coming, we all know that it's here, and if we're going to make CARA work for North Dakota, we need communities like Fargo, we need our Native American communities to all pull together and come up with a design. I want to also mention another piece of legislation that I would, you know, might not be something that the commission wants to get directly involved in, but I happen to think it's absolutely critical. And that is, we need more resources. CARA was passed with very little additional dollars to help communities, especially communities who are more impoverished recover. So Senator Joe Manchin, who has had this problem in his state, he's been talking about this for three years, finally is getting some attention to this issue, said, we can't do this without resources, and we certainly can't do it for families who are currently struggling. By the way, I don't know how many of you saw a report about what this is costing us in terms of health insurance? Do you see this? Bloomberg had a report today that between 2007 and today, that the request for treatment and the need for treatment, accessing health insurance for treatment is up 3,000 percent. So I gave you those numbers. Think of all of those people, if they're on private insurance that can access treatment, what that's going to cost all of us who pay premiums. And so this is not, this is not an issue where we can say, well, those families, you know, that's their problem, those families, you know, should take care of this on their own. This is a public health crisis, and we should treat it like we would treat Zika, like we would treat any public health crisis. But that takes resources. So we think that as we've looked at this problem, and I'm not blaming doctors, I'm not blaming anyone, but we know that overprescription of opioid-related drugs has led to a lot of addictions that we wouldn't have had otherwise. You can't have these dramatic increases and not look at the parallel relationship with overprescribing and not know that we have a problem. So what should we be doing? And it's Joe's idea, and I'm one of the original cosponsors, along with Amy Klobuchar, over in the east of us here. We said, what if we took just one cent per milligram of prescribed opioids and set that aside for a fund that impoverished communities and that communities could use for drug treatment to actually help families? And I know, if your offices are anything like mine, and we know local government tends to be closer to the folks, you're getting overrun with calls from mothers, from family members who saying, where do I go? I have to have treatment. And you know what they're asking us? Can't you get law enforcement to arrest them? Because today in America, treatment is, if you want treatment, you know where treatment is? Treatment's in the jail. Maybe, maybe. And so, you know, we have desperate people who want to access treatment. Now, the last thing I want to say, and I think it's really important, and I brought along a CRS report on opioid treatment programs and the federal regulations so that you know what some of these restrictions are when you're fashioning your plan. But you can't do, you know, when you talk to the people who do this every day, you have to have an opioid treatment program. And that opioid treatment program has to have medication-assisted treatment. And you're fortunate that you have a physician here who can tell you all about the neurological changes that go with addiction. We used to describe methamphetamines and opioids and heroin react the same way, where, you know, what causes the extreme high is you grow the receivers, and so a little bit of input causes a big result. Well, eventually, your body will recalibrate. And we used to say with methamphetamines, we used to have bikers come into doctors' offices and cry because they couldn't get high anymore. And so when you're withdrawing from these drugs, you aren't going to be successful unless you figure out how to calibrate that relationship. Unfortunately, in North Dakota, you know, under these programs, it's a DEA-sponsored program, we're restricted in the number of patients that one physician can see. And quite honestly, there probably isn't a physician that wants everybody on their patient load to be, they want to help the families that are already on their patient load, but we have to get them certified. Today, in North Dakota, there are only two physicians who are certified to administer a medication-assisted treatment. Couple things, CARA actually grew the numbers of people that one physician can see, that was one of the fixes, but we're working on potentially looking at advanced practice nurses having that ability. I think probably when we look more towards managed care, which this will be long-term, we need to make sure that we're, that the federal government isn't standing in the way of the medical professionals doing what they need to do here. And so I think when people think this is like alcohol treatment, it's not like alcohol treatment. They think it's like cigarette, you know, cessation. It's not like that. None of us would ever presuppose, although, you know, nicotine delivery devices can act the same way. We've got to understand what the state of the art is, what best practices are for treatment. And that's really the role of the federal government, CDC. I think you see a lot of this coming out, and I would really hope that we could continue to have a dialogue between my office and obviously the entire congressional delegation and organizations within your committee, you know, whatever you're forming, so that we can continue to provide you with the best information on how to access federal funds, the best information that we have on what is best practices for treatment. And we will continue to believe that working together, this is a problem we can solve. But if we ignore it, if we deny it's here, you know, I have a saying that I've said for years, which is, you can't solve a problem you won't admit you have. And this is a problem that you've admitted you have, now we've got to move forward and figure out how we're going to solve it. So I'd be glad, Mayor, to answer any questions.
Yes.
Thank you, Senator. I'm curious with, you know, the Washington perspective on this, is there dialogue going on with the American Medical Association?
I think it's been all hands on deck, and the people who have been most involved are those public health folks who saw this early on, and the addiction counselors and the addiction treatment community that has helped fashion the bill, but I have been deeply disappointed by the lack of resources. I mean, after this bill passes, I will tell you, you know, even given a cycle for funding, I'm not convinced that it's going to grow any additional treatment options for your citizens. We've got to figure that piece out.
From a standpoint of prescribing?
Oh, yeah. No, a couple of things you need to know. North Dakota and the committee that has been kind of self-selected to figure this out has been operating for a lot of years, and they've been doing really great jobs, whether it's collection of old prescriptions or whether it is in fact establishing a database so that we don't have pill seekers come into a doctor's office and you can pull them up and know where they've gotten their prescriptions. And so that's critical. But you know what the end result of that has been? People move to heroin. When prescription medications become inaccessible, they will look for another opioid replacement. And so that's why you see the growth in the use of heroin. And so don't think if you simply clamp down on prescribing that you're going to solve that problem. You may in fact solve the problem of additional people getting addicted, but it's, at this point, people are desperate to do whatever it takes to still feel normal.
Every major medical society has attacked this issue and have pain control programs you have to take. And then if somebody's on pain management too long, they go onto pain contract, every one of them has that. So you can't, it used to be relatively routine that somebody would get 30 tablets and then say, by the way, I lost it, can I have 30 more? That doesn't happen as much anymore. And I think I talked to Senator Heitkamp about this one time. One of the things that plagued us was a smiley face. So if you went into hospital, your pain had to be controlled, so you'd smile, okay? Maybe it doesn't have to be that well-controlled. So we're relearning maybe what patients need. And I know Dave, when he had his accident, you'd take some pain medication, but you supplement with Motrin and Tylenol, and you start learning to come off the drug. So I think the expectations of society have to change a bit, but then the problem is, the post-hospital survey says, was your pain managed in the hospital? And you get dinged if it wasn't controlled. So it is an education.
Right. That's an accreditation thing, and I think we're looking at what role we played in that in terms of CMS, what role we played in making sure that, you know, helping create the crisis and making, you know, so that hospital administrators who want good grades, you know, so you leave happy. Well, happy shouldn't be the requirement here. Unaddicted should be the requirement here.
You push a balloon, it's going to come out somewhere, you know, one side or the other with the meth. You know, at one point, we locked up, provided bot locks for all the, you know, anhydrous ammonia tanks around the state, made a dent. And then we restricted the sale of pseudoephedrine. Pseudoephedamine?
Yeah.
I know you know that. And that stopped basically the in-state production of meth.
Right. But the in-state production was at best only about 10 percent. And what we're seeing now is a lot of Mexican heroin and Mexico has started producing white powder heroin. And so, you know, we've got a border security issue that we need to deal with, we've got to continue to work with law enforcement, we've got to have the resources in law enforcement to be on the street to create that deterrent. And that's one part of it, but the other part is really being smart about how you invest your resources, how you design your plan. And we're willing to participate in any way we can.
Well, thank you very much. We do have a long agenda tonight, so I don't mean to cut you short, but thank you very much for your time and coming forth to us. John, you had a few other speakers you had for us, and then we probably need to get to our consent agenda issues.
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney and members of the commission. Most sincere thanks to you, Senator Heitkamp. We also see a representative from Senator Hoven's office in the commission room tonight. So we all know with the North Dakota approach to things, there's a collaboration that takes place unlike a lot of the world out there. Next, we'd like to go to Ruth Roman, the Director of Fargo Cass Public Health.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you, Senator Heitkamp. It's always great to hear what's happening at the federal level, so thank you. Yes, thank you for the opportunity to continue this discussion. We know, as Senator Heitkamp said, it's a national problem, and it's right here, it's real for many of us. We've responded in the last few months. We talked about Narcan, how to have that available for folks, naloxone. Our community has had some, two wonderful public forums in the last few months that have been well-received. We've explored interventions, what might work, what's working in other parts of the country, but what's next? What's next? We certainly haven't done enough, but we need to move forward with a more comprehensive plan. So Fargo Cass Public Health, what's our role? Where are we within all of the Behavioral Health and Addiction Services? You know, historically, Human Services within North Dakota, the Department of Human Services has historically been tasked with behavioral health and addiction services within the state of North Dakota. We have Southeast Human Services here. Public Health, it's not that this is new, but it's a different role for us, working with Behavioral Health and with Addiction Services. Having said that, that doesn't mean we're not ready to jump on board and take this on. We are committed to providing the leadership for our community as we move forward. We are, I'm very happy to be able to say that we now have a dedicated staff person, Robin Liedke, who many of you have worked with in the past, who has vast experience working in alcohol misuse, underage drinking, other safe community concerns, will be able to dedicate at least half, if not even more, of her time to this issue. We'll work closely with Human Services. We need to expand the table. We know there have been a lot of really great groups getting together, working on different pieces of this problem, but like Senator Heitkamp said, we need that overarching, comprehensive plan. So how do we make that happen? I don't have a plan here laid out for any of you, but what I can commit to is bringing the people together, identifying the gaps, and coming up with some potential solutions. And we don't need to come up with those solutions, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. We are not the first community that is faced with this. There are communities who are much farther along than us. What's working for them? Will it work for our community? We have to look at what's unique about Fargo. We'll work closely with our public health partners on the Clay County side. We know that the river isn't stopping any of this activity. And so what will we do? What do we need? What are some of the gaps that we're looking at? We need more public education and awareness. How are we going to involve our schools? How are we going to involve our faith communities? Youth groups need to be talking about this like they're talking about depression and suicide and a lot of other topics. Adding it to whoever is willing to talk about this with our youth, whether our adults, we need to task them and get their assistance. We need more work with our medical providers, and we had that conversation. How are they prescribing the opioids? How are they treating the individuals who are on those opioids? What is the follow-up? We need to continue to have access to naloxone so that individuals can have that available. We've made great progress with our response, our first responders in our community having that available. We need access to comprehensive addiction treatment, including medication-assisted programs that are science-based and that have proven track records. The old 28-day treatment program is not going to work for opioid addiction.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a quick question? So there's a methadone clinic now in Minot, is that correct? Is there one in our area? In the Red River, there isn't one at all?
There is not. We are--
So is that the, so to me, obviously, you're way more of an expert.
Yep.
But to me, if people are having, the only drug treatment is going to jail, I mean, we've got to have some kind of clinic in our, in this area, that only makes sense. That saves a lot of money down the road, wouldn't it?
Yeah, we have just heard from the group that is doing that clinic in Minot. They are going to be here on August 15th. There's, Department of Human Services is doing a day-long symposium here in Fargo on August 15th. They are one of the speakers, and they have reached out to meet with us, and I encourage some involvement from the commission at that meeting as well when we get those details.
Ruth, can I ask, is that a private company? And then, it is?
I'm assuming that it's a private company. I don't know the details. I do know that it's out of Arizona, which means the lead that it's a private company.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then, most important, we need support for families and for loved ones. We need a system that they can go to for the information that they need so that they can access that information in a timely manner. We need some support services, whether they're informal or formal, for those families that are living with this day in and day out. So can Fargo Cass Public Health alone address this issue and make an impact? Absolutely not. But I am totally committed to our role, and I also totally believe that as a community and as a state, we can make an impact. So thank you.
Thank you, Ruth, very sincerely. Next, we'll hear from Dr. John Baird, our Health Officer.
Thank you. I'm Dr. John Baird, Health Officer at Fargo Cass Public Health and also Coroner for Cass County. And it's, the problem is nationally, and it's also locally. We have narcotic and opioid deaths every year, but there's been some changes. It's changing into other drugs. More often, we see fentanyl now and even fentanyl, and so it evolves into new and different-- drugs and where they come from. Each death is a tragedy, and each one is, represents some families and individuals who have been hurt and the failing of our community to address the issue and provide the support that's needed in a system of care. There is not an easy answer, and it needs the focus of many people. The general public needs to understand the issue better, and there have been some workshops, some open forums, and we need to continue to do those sorts of things to let people know that this is not an issue that affects a certain group of people. It crosses all socioeconomic lines, as you mentioned, rich and poor, homeless, and also those living with close, loving families. And so, it's a serious issue. The community of users and those addicted in our community and families and friends of people that are addicted need to understand how the illness works and how to deal with it, need to know that our community supports them in their efforts to overcome this situation. They also need more options for help, and much work needs to be done in that area. A good emergency response to overdoses is very important, and it has gotten a lot more attention. The availability of Naloxone or Narcan is becoming more readily available. The understanding that people should call 911 for help and that they should help someone breathe who's having trouble breathing, give Narcan if it's available, but get medical assistance and then get a medical evaluation and get into the system to get some care and help. And we've been working in that area with the ambulance and fires carrying Narcan now, and we're doing some things there. The availability of treatment programs is very important. Medication-assisted treatment, as we've been talking about with methadone, Suboxone, VivaTrol and other options for treatment. And treatment is a lifelong commitment, just as any other disease. This is not something that means someone is weak and can't take care of themselves. The stigma of addiction is serious and is not good. It's something that people need to struggle with through their life and reduce their risk, have harm reduction and reduce the exposure that they have to risking their own lives and support of families and the community. So there's many things to do in this, and at Fargo-Cass Public Health, we're committed to doing what we can and to bringing people together, to working together, finding solutions. There's work that's already being going on, and we'll continue to work with public and private agencies, individuals, and do what we can to support our community.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Baird. And we're going to have a few words of sharing from an impacted family member who has taken on this cause by necessity to champion for people and families and friends at risk and to heighten our awareness of that side of this equation. So, a call on Nikki Anderson at this moment.
Thank you, John. Mayor, Commissioners, everyone here. I would like to be anywhere else but here right now. We lost two children, our daughter, our son, both bright, brilliant, talented and loved. And I also would like to acknowledge the other family members that are here with us today, if I may, who lost their children this past year. Mark and Connie Weed and Jamie, if you guys would mind standing. Anyway, there they are. Mike and Mary Beth Traynor are here. They lost their son, Matthew. And, could you shut my phone off, please? And Lori Morris, Tyson Chaney's mother. And Michael Weed and Tyson and our son Luke all died from the fentanyl. And now, I'd like to ask if there's anybody else in this audience that you personally have been affected by addiction or you know of friends or family members that are struggling with addiction? If you wouldn't mind just raising your hand and letting me know how many people here know somebody, love somebody, or they have friends. It's, what you said, Senator Heidkamp, it's not a silent majority anymore, or silent minority. It's a majority. I did bring several letters. I'm not going to read them because of a time issue, but we received probably over two hundred letters from people in our community saying, "Thank you for speaking out. I've lived in the shadows. We didn't know where to go. We didn't know what to do. We have been embarrassed. We've been ashamed." And what I am asking the most for is acceptance of addiction as an illness. We know that, we say that, but it's a fact. Nobody who's an addict is going to choose that addiction. And as families, we can't love them out of it. We can take them everywhere. Actually, I made a list for Ruth Roman and Dr. Baird and John. We had attended fourteen different places, even trying methadone the last week before Luke died. And that particular doctor, as you said, did not want to have patients doing that. You can't blame them. And sometimes, just as cancer, you can go for your treatments and you hope they work, but sometimes they don't and you die anyway. But with addiction to the different drugs and opioids and the depression, you know, they need a fighting chance, and we need to have a lot more done here. I do like this quote by Sandra Sontag, who said, "Illness is the night side of life, and we are all in that kingdom of illness and death," or illness and wellness. We hold dual citizenship in that. And we don't know when that's going to come to us or when that's going to come to our family. Because for me, standing here, you know, I could say I'm mentally ill. I mean, the depression and grief that you suffer, that so many of us do, it's devastating. And, you know, our hearts have been ripped out, our lives have been torn apart. So many of us, not just us, but everybody else, you're members of the community that are functioning members, that give back to the community, but when you are suffering yourself, it's not just the person that died, it's the ripple effect of everybody else that affects your community. And I just really want everybody to know that actually, whenever I go out and speak, I ask Luke and Ashley, I look at their pictures, I have them with me, and I say, "What do you want, what do you want me to say? What do you want to do?" And Luke always posted stuff on Facebook that I thought should not be there, and I'd go, "Oh, my gosh, why are you putting that on for everybody to see? I was suffering that myself." And he said, "'Cause I struggle. I have a struggle, and if I can help anybody else, I want to." And so now, I am charged by my children and the parents and the community of those that are addicted to go forward and help. Because for all of us that have lost somebody and we're struggling, we have a choice to make. And we can choose to let our tragedy define us. We can choose to let our tragedy destroy us. And let me tell you, it just has, you're like a heroine from being destroyed. Or you can choose to be strengthened by it and strengthen your community and strengthen everybody around us. And I really hope that as we go forward as a community, I really hope for acceptance and love and compassion for the addicts and their families. And I thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Well, John, that was pretty impactful. What do we, any final thoughts?
Mayor Mahoney and members of the commission, member of the audience, thanks for indulging with us as we broke away from the agenda for a moment. Here's what we know about North Dakotans and those of us that we work with. We have a lot of heart. We care. We will go the extra mile. We have a connection to all levels of leadership with not just each other, but our neighbors, our state level of leadership, our congressional leadership. We have amazing people in the front lines with Chief Todd and his staff, and the fact that they've alerted us to this months ahead of time, and there's room now on the bench for others to fill those gaps, I think that'll be very beneficial to our law enforcement community to have more partners on board. And just challenge us all to just be there for everybody at risk, to give it a little bit extra while we're called upon, when we're called upon to do it. And just, you'll see it out there tomorrow, you'll see it the next day, you'll hear about it. As Senator Heidkamp says, we can't be in denial. And we all have a job to do, so I'll leave it at that.
Nikki, you have one more thing to say?
I did.
The last word.
The last word. I did want to thank Chief Todd and the narcotics officers that came to our home on the day Luke died. They took care of us the whole day, because we couldn't be in our home. And they drove us around, and I just, the outpouring of support that we've had from the community, but from our law enforcement, they deserve just, I just can't thank them enough. And I wanted you to be aware how wonderful they were.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. I know some came here that didn't want to sit on the whole agenda, so if you want to leave now, and Senator, I know you have someplace to go, there is a Diet Coke there for you because I know you love Diet Coke. I didn't want you to be ill-prepared for your next meeting. Thank you all you came tonight. We really do view that it's a serious problem, and we will address this as fortright as we can, and our hearts and minds are with you all. Mike Traynor and I operate together, so it's really hard to see the loss of his son, so... So, we'll go on. I'm just going to do one more thing, and I beg the commission, just as we have an award to give tonight, and before we get into the agenda, could I just do this one quick thing here? I think Tony's going to help me out with this. So the Fargo Central Garage and Metro Transit Garage, we're recently notified that they have been awarded the Leading Fleets Award for being one of the best fifty leading fleets in the industry. The Leading Fifty Fleets Awards Program, sponsored by the Government Fleet Magazine and American Public Works Association, recognizes operations that are performing at a high level. The performance focuses particularly in fleet leadership, competitiveness, efficiency, and planning for the future and overwhelming challenges that are to come. So, I think I have Harold Benton, who the whole group is coming up, or Harold, are you bringing your group up?
Yeah.
So we're going to bring the team up here and take a picture, I think.
Let's give them a round of applause for their award.
[applause]
Thank you. Keep clearing the room out here. So, we're going to go to public hearings, application by Adarun for the payment in lieu of taxes for a project in Portion Building located at Forty-Fifth, Forty-four, Fortieth Avenue South. This is one of which I believe, Commissioner Pepcorn, you wanted to table for two weeks.
If it's okay, we'll continue it till our next scheduled meeting, and part of the reason is we're going to have our brown bag coming up on Thursday, basically talking about tax exemptions, and so, in lieu of that, let's continue it till the next meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? We thought this would be better so that people could have a good discussion, and then when it comes forth to us, we'll know by any of the criterias. Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Hi.
Gary?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Hi.
Mahoney?
Hi.
Item B, application filed by Jim, the Jim Craft Beer Lounge, for a Class C-1 alcoholic beverage license at six-fourteenth Main Avenue, continued from the six-twenty regular meeting. Steve Sprague to explain.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So today, before you, is a license that we haven't seen issued in quite a while. The Class C license was capped back in nineteen eighty-six, and so, we had a request come to us, you know, basically they said, "Well, why is this capped?" And we looked into it, and there wasn't any really good reason. So we decided maybe we should create a new license. We did that a couple of months ago, and so now, we have an applicant coming forward with this. It does come to you with a recommendation of approval from Liquor Control. There is a couple of changes, though. The DBA, they're doing business as name, they want to change to Front Street Tap Room. So going forward, that's probably how you'll see it. And then, at Liquor Control, we also made a recommendation that they, and any place would have to have this, but that they get their certificate of occupancy prior to being able to get the liquor license. So, it's just one of those things that they're working on, the design and getting it sprinkled and some of those kinds of things.
Is there anyone present who wishes to address City Commission regarding this application? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion, but Steve, I have a question first. So the application is the Jim LLC doing business as, and is that when you change it to the Front Street? So the rest of it, the LLC is the same, but it's the name of the business is different?
Absolutely correct. We would probably, normally, if this would have happened after approval, we would have just changed it at the issuance time.
So I'll read the motion, and then you correct me if it sounds like it's incorrect, okay? I'll make a motion to approve the application by the Jim LLC doing business as, Front Street Tap Room, for a Class C-1 alcoholic beverage license at six-fourteen Main Avenue.
Sounds like that'll work.
Second.
Any further discussion?
For the commission, you're probably going to see a lot more of these, you know, you might have read in the paper that there's a lot of microbreweries and that kind of thing that want to start expanding their business, and they can't do that at a different location unless they want to have two different breweries going on. So you're going to see more of these coming forward. It's a new industry that's happening in Fargo. It's a good deal for the city of Fargo, and I hope that it gets approved, and I hope that one's due as well.
Will you be able to go to all these craft beer places?
I'm going to have to go to every single one.
One more quick comment. It's state regulations, some of them are confusing, and basically what it was going to force them to do was to sell their beer to a distributor and then buy it back, and so, there were some confusing regulations, and so we're trying to, by doing this...
All the commissioners are getting a couple of weeks ahead or a meeting or two ahead, but that's not this license, but they're...
But that's part of causing the confusion, that there's some state regulations that are making it more difficult for us, and so we're trying to, by doing this, we're trying...
Is your commission getting innovative, would you say?
I don't know. That's, you might call it that.
If not innovative, at least interesting.
I'm sure that has something, Mr. Chairman, I'm sure that has something to do with the two new additions becoming innovative.
There you go.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Hi.
Gary?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Hi.
Mahoney?
Hi.
Transfer a Class AB alcoholic beverage license from Playmakers at Avalon Event Center West to license-holding Pickle Parrot at five-oh-three Third Avenue North. Steve Sprague to explain this one.
So, when the Swanson Properties was sold, part of that agreement was the transfer of the Playmakers liquor license. And the American Legion building was purchased by the same people that bought the Swanson's property, and so now they've got a place to put that license, and so, they're consummating that deal and moving that AB license downtown. So, at Playmakers, and if you'll remember, back in, I think it was May, we approved the issuance of an FA license to go back out to where the Avalon Event Center West is at. So, everybody's going to have their liquor license.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to City Commission regarding this transfer? Is there anybody who wishes to speak? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Hi.
Gary?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Hi.
Mahoney?
Hi.
Special assessments for maintenance of the Skyway system. Steve Sprague to explain.
Annually, about this time, we approve the assessment to the people that are the properties that have connection to the Skyway, and that assessment goes to pay for the cleaning, the maintenance, heating and air conditioning of the Skyway. And so, we've sent out our notices to the property owners that are involved, and the assessment is before you.
Is it the same as last year, Mr. Chairman?
Is it the same as last year, Steve?
Actually, what happened was that we had spent less money than it was costing to maintain it, and so we basically took a year off. So, it takes about eighty thousand... So it takes about $80,000 a year to maintain it, and we'd built up a balance that was a little too big, so we didn't have this assessment last year. But the dollar amount is the same as the prior year, so, I don't know if you're following that, but-
Yes, makes sense. In a way, you can say it's a tax reduction.
We gave them a, we gave them a year's break, is what happened.
You should be happy. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in regards to this? Anyone present who wishes to speak? Hearing none, I'll close it, do I have a motion?
Move.
Second.
I thought there'd be a jump to see who could lower taxes, in fact, you're adding taxes right now. First and a second, we have, shall we? Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Special assessment for nuisance abatement fees, Steve Sprague.
So the nuisance abatement thing, assessment, is if a property owner doesn't mow their lawn, they, it's complaint-driven, so the city will go out and mow the lawn, and then we bill them, and if they haven't paid for the work, then we put it on the property as an assessment. We do that for mowing, snow removal, and Dutch elm diseased tree removal. And so annually, it's usually in August of every year, we come forward with the assessment list.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak regarding these nuisance abatement fees? Anybody present who wishes to speak? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I have a question. Are any of these, are any of them disputed?
Any disputed?
Are there any of them that said that they mowed the lawn, for example, and we went and mowed it anyway?
No.
Okay.
If that happens, our, the policy that we use, again, it's complaint-driven, so if somebody else complains about it, we go out, we take pictures of it beforehand, take pictures of it afterwards, so.
Very good, thank you.
Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Special assessment of sewer repairs, Steve Sprague.
I promise I'll go sit down after this one. So the city, and I'm not sure if you're aware of this, but the city assists property owners if their sewer were to fail during the year, and we provide a 15-year special assessment for them to reline or repair their sewer from the house to the main, or wherever it needs repairs. And so we put together our assessment list on an annual basis and bring it to you at this time, so.
So this is a program that makes it helpful for a homeowner not to pay one-time fee for their sewage repair, and then they can pay it off specials over time with the great rates, so that's the idea the city does.
This is a 15-year assessment, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So is the root of this tree roots?
A lot of times it is. We have heavy soil, obviously, in this area, and a lot of times, the older homes have clay tile sewers, and after a while, the clay tile fails and collapses, so.
Now, do you know any of the innovative engineering techniques that make it easier to repair, and which they reline and such?
Exactly. It's an improved method now, if the sewer sets, you know, is set up correctly, they can, they'll clean it out, and then they'll, they'll put like a sock in there, they put it through there, and then blow it up, and it hardens, and it's a guaranteed, I believe it's a 50-year guarantee, so, and it's, so it's less invasive, they don't have to go in and necessarily dig up the street, so, yep.
Very good. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak about the special assessment for sewer repairs? Anyone present who wishes to speak? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, and I'll give a compliment to Steve. Steve, you're a true Renaissance man, you go from liquor licenses to sewer lines, you have expertise in multiple ways, so.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Number G, zoning change from LLC Limited Commercial to General Commercial on a conditional overlay on Lot 9, Block 1, Osgood Townsite 11th Edition, and Lot 2, Block 2, Osgood Townsite 12th Edition, First Reading and Res zoning ordinance, 480, 488, 5046th Street South. Nicole Crutchfield to explain.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So the applicant requesting, is requesting a zoning change from Limited Commercial to General Commercial. There is an existing conditional overlay on this property, however, we are choosing to, are suggesting that we amend this conditional overlay, keep what's existing, and then add to it. So the upzoning, if you will, from Limited Commercial to General Commercial, basically gives more opportunities for higher intense uses that might not be appropriate here, such as waste-related uses, heavy industrial, things like that. So that's what the conditional overlay or the ordinance that you have in front of us is just to limit some of those, given the location in Osgood. And so basically, the applicant is proposing a self-storage facility, the applicant is here, if you have any questions for him. This is the best zoning for his use, and also, we've actually done a few amendments to actually increase the building coverage to allow him a little bit more flexibility under the General Commercial zoning ordinance. So the Planning Commission did recommend unanimously approval for this, and be glad to answer any questions.
Does the person want to speak to this?
I'd be glad to, if there's any questions.
Okay. Any questions by the Commissioners? Is there any president who wishes to speak in regards to this zoning change? Anyone present who wishes to speak? Hearing none, can I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item H, commemorative addition, 2701 64th Avenue South and 6313 27th Avenue South, approval recommended by Planning Commission on 7/5/16, zoning change from agricultural to single-dwelling residential, First Reading and Res zoning ordinance, plat of commemorative addition. Nicole, explain this.
Yes, the applicant of this is the city of Fargo, in conjunction with the current property owner, Mr. Kinsler, and the intent of this is to allow the establishment of a detached, single-family house on the subject property. The property is currently unzoned and unplatted, and so to urbanize it under city standards, it requires a zoning and plating. And so basically, all the plat does is establish the existing property lines, and make it officially into the city of Fargo standards. And then the zoning allows, from agricultural zoning is just meant for an interim land use, and so to urbanize it is to change it to a single-family use. You'll notice the Planning Commission voted two against this, the rise of a 6-2 vote, based on other properties that have zoned in this area. Generally, some of the Commissioners believe that there should be a higher density in this location, but staff, we believe this does meet our long-range plan, growth plan, and does satisfy the needs of the existing property owners. We would be glad to answer any questions.
I know Don and Mary Kinsler are here as well, so if we want to-
Oh, I should point to that, too, that you have a letter, you should have a letter on your dais of a protest, and I believe that protester is here. Because of that protest on record, we do require a supermajority for the zoning component. So here's an image of the plat, basically, it's just, again, establishing the boundaries, and then the, this is, because of the protest on record, the 20, it's met over 20%, and therefore requires, based on century law.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this zoning?
Good evening to the commission, and I have to tell you, this feels kinda small in perspective compared to what Hyde-Hyde Camp was talking about and everybody else, so, but on a different note, it is, it's quite expensive for those that are in that area. And what I'm talking about is, the reason I wanna stop this, essentially change the, or stop it going from an agricultural to a single-family dwelling, is because as of, essentially, July 25th, we received a letter from the city notifying us that the, this improvement project will be going through, and the speed at which it's going through, essentially, is, it seems kind of like things are being railroaded through, with the property that's adjacent to us changing from the house that was there till, to what's going on now there. They wanna increase, or they wanna change 27th Street to essentially a paved road. And that's fine, but what happens is it assesses the property orders adjacent to 27th Street specials. And on a two-acre plot that we have, it's been assessed at $86,000, just under 87. And on a four-acre plot that is utilized as a pasture for our horses, it's been assessed at $105,000. And so that, in addition to the $100,000, we've already been assessed for 25th Street and the development of Silverleaf, just kinda wanna bring it to the attention of the commission, is there ever a point at which there's a limit to special assessments? And just wanna, just so that you guys hear what is happening to local people.
So the special assessment is on the road, but not the sewer and water, so the Commissioners should understand that, and that would complete the pavement from where it is now, which is a dirt road.
Correct.
The other option would be not to do the road, and just to do sewer and water, your assessment would not be $180,000.
$190,000 is what we're looking at right now.
Yeah.
In addition to the $100,000, we still have on the books.
And is your prior assessment deferred, or is it not?
It's deferred, yes.
Okay.
And so-
How long, Mr. Chairman?
How long is it deferred?
They didn't say when the deferral was up, so. It was signed in 2012, so I suppose it's a 10-year, so 2022, I would think.
April's coming up, to answer. Were you gonna answer that question, April?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. You're welcome. The deferral was signed in 2012, it was a 10-year deferral, and in reading through that today, I did have a conversation with this gentleman today, and following that conversation, I went back and took a look. Many of these property owners were offered deferrals in 2012, and as a condition of that deferral, they waived their right to protest the local street being installed in the future. So in 2012, in order to get the special assessments associated with that project deferred, they waived their right to protest this future improvement that we're talking about today. The improvement is nothing to do with the plat that's in front of you today, just so we're clear, in front of you today is a plat and a zoning change. It's actually Project BN16L, which was up to the commission July 18th, and it's out being advertised and available for contractors to, to prepare estimates on. The intention would be to award that project, we're taking the estimates back and opening those on the 24th of July. I'm sorry, August.
What I'm confused about is that she said there's a protest, we have to have a supermajority.
Right.
You're saying he can't protest, so what is-
No, the letter of protest that he sent, he's protesting the plat and the zoning change, he's protesting it because he feels it leads to assessments associated with this project, BN16L. I do wanna point out, as I said, they, their, his existing deferral, each of those property owners had different deferral agreements, does offer to roll this project into his existing deferral. So you've got eight years remaining, when these specials get certified, they would automatically go into that deferral that you currently have, that's what your agreement states. And so that is available to him on this project.
So, Mr. Chairman, that was, you hit the nail on the head, that was my question, does this automatically roll in? And then from standpoint of the city and planning, I mean, what's our crystal ball say for that area eight years from now? One would, you know, objectively say that that street's gonna go through at some point, and a question I have, because this didn't come up in my first Planning Commission meeting, I don't believe you were there, so I have no knowledge or memory of what we proved on this project, because there was nobody there to oppose it on July 5th. I'm asking maybe some more nuts and bolts questions. Okay, so, so hypothetical here, if, if we pass this, I mean, I recognize the zoning change tonight, the costs are different, and that's assumed in an eight-year category, then, did we buy that land as part of the Kinsler project, the city?
I would defer to Eric for that question.
Yeah, as part of-
That's all I needed to know.
Yep.
Okay, so then, I would presume as the city continues to grow south, that these other lots, one would, could make the assumption that other folks are gonna sell their land for, you know, three or four houses, or five houses, or what's our, what's the, what's the city's plan as a new Planning Commissioner meets?
Well, the Samuel property there that you see on the east side of the street, it's probably up to them, when do they want to, you know, sell that property, you've got one house on there now, and it mentioned it's pasture, and certainly could be used for a lot more. The property to the north, this property, I believe that they used to have, and they've converted part of that, so it's really up to that property owner when they think they might want to develop that, but certainly that street was needed for their previous development, and if, you know, Kinsler might put two houses on his property at some point.
And does Mr. Samson own all that land we're talking about around that?
Well, you see Samuel Drive, I know they owned that property, I'm not sure, did you own the Silverleaf property also? Yeah, so they have been developing out to the north, and they have kept his farm sted.
So when is 64th gonna be paved?
April. Well, 64th Avenue is not currently in our CIP. What we do have on the docket, I believe it's 2019, we have some funding slated from the state for the overpass structure on 64th Avenue, so we would anticipate that we would have 64th paved from 25th to the overpass structure prior to 2019. So it is coming, it's in the imminent future.
Any other discussion, question?
April, who currently wants this paved?
The, the infrastructure request we received was the, for the sanitary sewer line. There's currently just a gray line there that accepts the outflow from their septic systems. In order for a building permit to be issued for the house that's being moved in, we need to upgrade that to a full-service sanitary line. PUPAC, the Public Works Project Evaluation Committee, reviewed this, and at that point, staff said to PUPAC, you know, it's a gravel road, normally gravel is not allowed within city limits, it's been annexed this way, we are bringing in a contractor to do the underground, it makes some sense to get some scale of economy and have one contract to do the underground and the paving at this point. We, we did investigate, as indicated, the, there are deferrals out there. We understood this was gonna be controversial, we sent the letters to the property owners describing what their assessments were gonna be, well in advance of our normal process, to give them the opportunity to engage with us as the plat comes forward, and as the project for the underground and the paving goes forward. We do have some options before us. Like I said, we believe that we have the right to put the paving in, because the owners out there have waived their right to protest. However, there's a couple of weeks here before we open that project, the city could decide that we're going to hear protests, or accept protests from these landowners, regardless of what contracts we have in place existing. If we do that, the paving could be protested out, the project could be amended to be just an underground project, and that could be what moves forward. The other thing that we've done is, when we sent those letters out to the property owners, we also forwarded them to our finance committee. It is our finance committee that generally decides whether or not to offer deferrals, or, I should say, reviews requests for deferrals, and decides whether or not to recommend them to this commission. And so that is going to be heard by the finance committee on Thursday, when they meet, to determine if they want to, you know, this particular one automatically rolls some of the other property owners out there, it does not. And so does the city wish to offer a deferral to those property owners? I think the issue becomes, do we want the paving enough that we're willing to offer the deferral to get the paving, right? And so that's where we're at. And we do have contracts in place that give us the right to put the paving in, but we could supplement that with an additional deferral if we choose to. So those conversations are ongoing, and we would have all of that, hopefully, wrapped in a package and ready for you by the time we bring a recommendation for a project award forward.
Can you just go over the cost issue? Because if you just put sewer and water in and come back, in theory, you may well be out there in five years-
Right.
-putting this road in.
We could be proposing the same project.
So, what's the increased cost, you know, when you do that? Increased cost of whatever construction costs-
Right.
-are five, six years from now?
Well, we've seen an escalator, maybe 5% per year, as an escalator in construction costs, so yes, each year that we delay installing the paving and the other improvements, it's likely that they will become more expensive.
And so the homeowner, then, their specials will actually increase as well, if you delay the project.
One other thing to point out is the specials, the numbers that were reported to the property owners, of course, at this time, are estimates. They're based on the engineering estimate. We've had a great year so far this year. A lot of our actual bid prices have been coming in lower than our engineers' estimates. You know, we would be hopeful that that's what happens here in this climate. However, on the other side, if it were to come in over, we are, of course, capped by state law, if it comes in at a hundred and forty percent of the engineer's estimate, we must reject those projects too, so.
Commissioner Gary.
Yeah, I mean, the cost might go down, we don't know.
Right.
You know, it's only for us to know that. So I'm, my point was, why don't we let the people decide what they want in their front yard? If they want to wait five years or ten years, or whatever it is, it doesn't hurt me any. You know, I mean, it's their, it's their road. Uh, so I would at least like to hear the protest, that's just me personally, I don't know what the commissioners think.
Was she saying we can do that?
I, we have to move you.
Sir, you, you wanted to make a comment?
My name's Clarence Samuel, and I am actually the owner of that property. Just as a little history, I served on this, uh, planning commission for Fargo for sixteen years. And, um, the thing is, is that I didn't understand, even having after served that long on a planning commission, the way this was accelerated through the system. And to the point that, you know, they're out there moving dirt to widen the road now, obviously to get the house in, but because the city bought that property and for such a tremendous amount of money, and with the specials that you're going to put on my property, without sixty-fourth Avenue, I presently, if this project goes through, I would have over fifty thousand dollars per acre of specials on my property. And I don't see how, you know, I could possibly ever sell it to anybody. Maybe I should just deed it to the city and let them worry about it. I mean, I, I think it's totally unfair to do this without doing it, and, and we do have water there. Castro water serves us. The sewer was put in on sixty-fourth as a single project three, four years ago. We do have sewer there. And yes, we do have our septic systems, but that was the city's choosing to have us keep it that way. Not ours at the time. So, you know, it isn't a problem that we created, as far as the sewer line goes with that. And I don't understand why they just can't upgrade that sewer. We have lived on that gravel road, as you call it, for thirty-five years or more, and never had a problem with anybody or anything. There's only three property owners that it serves.
Thank you.
And myself, and the Kinslers are here.
Mr. April, any comment on the, you had some question, when he's talking about the roadway, you mean, inside the?
I don't believe that's, that's not the city, that's actually the house mover that's out there making some accommodations to move the house in. So that's not a city project that's doing work on the road right now.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a crack of a motion.
Okay.
April.
Oh, I'm sorry, one more, go ahead. You want to speak? Come on up, Tom.
Hi, good evening, Don Kinsler. And first of all, thank you, especially to the mayor and administrator Bruce Grubb, and so many in the community, and city staff, engineers that worked so hard to preserve a historic structure. And it, it has moved along rapidly. The, the diking on Rose Creek is literally at the, at the lot, at the back door. The house, if the zoning change is approved, the house is going to be moved tomorrow. There was great concern that since the lot is low, if we get a heavy rain, it might get very difficult to get that house out. Uh, so the house is ready to roll tomorrow if, if the zoning is changed. The lot, uh, needs sewer, that needs to be dealt with. But otherwise, Mary and I wanted to make it clear that we're completely fine with whatever the existing landowners and the city want to do with the extra improvements, you know, the gravel road to, to paved or sidewalks and tree, you know, we're completely agreeable to whatever the existing landowners and the city want to work out. You know, we're completely fine with any of that.
Thank you, Don, appreciate you being, standing up. Mr. Grinberg, you got the motion you want to put out there?
Nicole has a word, and then I'll try and correct.
No, I was just, if you had questions for me.
Well, you might want to have April come up too, because between the two of you, you might, if I heard April correctly, is I would move that we approve the zoning change, and that water and sewer will then progress. But if I heard you right, April, at some point, finance and further information will come back, that we can make an independent decision.
Correct.
On the street.
Correct.
I think we all need to recognize that that's, that's my motion, so that we continue to work together, and if it's this year, if it's next year, if it's five years from now, um, I think we, we look, sooner or later, that's all going to come together.
Right.
So it's just a matter of when, and when the trigger's pulled on those costs.
Just for a point of clarification, the commission created the project, which includes the underground and the paving. That happened on July eighteenth. We will be back in front of you when we go to award. In the meantime, we'll look at protests, we'll decide if they're valid or not, or how we want to treat them. We're hearing from you how you want us to treat them. All of that will be taken into account, and when we come back to award the project, you can make that decision.
And just for clarification to his motion, if that point, the commission decides they do not want to proceed with the pavement, it could be done.
I think, yeah, we, yes, is a short answer. Technically, the longer answer is, we'd have to make that decision in advance of the award so we could addend the project to just be an underground project, so that we can accommodate Mr. Kinsler moving in.
Well, my curiosity is, when would the commission have an opportunity to rehear it, in a sense? Because you don't have the, you don't have the numbers yet.
Right.
The group, I think we've heard from the homeowners, maybe, if you're thinking that's what we've heard, listened to.
Right, so we're going to continue to work.
But if it's, if his assessment is a hundred, or eighty, or seventy, or sixty, is there some limit you think he'll be happy with?
There may be, or the deferral may be something that satisfies some of the homeowners. So we're going to continue to work with them, work with the finance committee, and see what the package looks like, you know, before we.
So you would come back to the commission, and it may be that the neighbors don't want it, and you come to us and say, here's our recommendation?
Right.
Or you may say that this is what we've worked out?
Right.
And that's the spirit of your motion?
You have that, is that?
Is there a second?
Wait, I guess I, could you clarify that motion, please? Are we doing the, just the zoning, or the zoning and plating, or?
Just the zoning.
Okay.
Put the motion up there once, Nicole, the recommended motion.
Yeah, there's a typo in there, so ignore that part, but.
The, um, the plating really doesn't affect your public facility decision either.
Correct.
The plating's really required for the building, typically required for the building permit. So the zoning, the plating would be, um, is in that motion, as well as the, the ordinance.
So Jim, if he's trying to have the intent, give us a suggestion, what motion it is. The suggested motion plus the issue that he added on to it.
I, I think it's, it, the suggested motion, and then also to direct the planning and engineering staff to work on the, uh, options for public facility improvements to be put in on, was it twenty-seventh Street?
Is that acceptable?
I believe so, so it's clear water and sewer's going to start, but streets is going to come back.
I think everything is coming back.
Okay.
And water is in, we're talking sewer and paving.
April, could you talk to the mic so, so people outside could hear what you said?
Just, it was just a point of clarification, water is in. We're talking sewer, paving, streetlights, and sidewalks.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, but I got a question. Are we accepting, uh, protests then for this? How are we going to know if people are unhappy or unhappy with what's, what we're doing if we're not allowing them to protest?
The, the waiver of protest was for public facility improvement, it had nothing to do with their ability to protest zoning or subdivision.
So we're still accepting protests based on that?
So it still requires supermajority.
Yeah. I'll second it.
Commissioner Strand.
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney, and members of the commission. I'm, a few questions, if I might. This, on face value, I like the aspects of this, where we're taking agricultural land and converting it to single-family residence, residence homes. But then I think I heard the word interim in there, which, and then in light of the planning commission, at least a couple members, and maybe some interpretations of the GO twenty thirty, uh, plans, that there's a preference out there for, for higher-density use of this land, which concerns me. Um, and so my first question is, 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 is this etched in stone, or will we see this come back as multi-family, higher-density zoning re-ups at a later time?
So my, uh, my suggest, uh, my thought was, when I use the word interim, that is for the existing agricultural zoning as of today. So when we bring land into the city limits, we often don't zone it at that time, or we take the existing zoning in agriculture, was that, so that's what we say interim, because we know transition's going to happen. I foresee this application also being transitional, might be transitional for fifty years, but I think at some point, when we look at the growth of the city, it could be that the current property owners sell that and redevelop at a higher intensity. And I think the planning commission's point of view, a couple members of that, want to jump straight to that endpoint, whereas the staff believes there's probably some phasing going on here. So as property, original property owner transitions to another property owner, and then maybe third or fourth generation later, might go higher density.
You're saying we'll take the Kinsler house down eventually and put apartments in there? Is that?
That's up to Mr. Kinsler.
No, because John, Kinsler House is to move to that lot, so I'm not, I'm clear what.
Well, those tracts could be subdivided at a later date.
Oh.
So there's my concern there, is this, which direction do we go with how much density? And yes, we do have a limited amount of land to develop, but, uh, there's a need, in my opinion, for more single-family homes than apartments. That's, that said, my next question is, is this in the flood zone? And in a protected flood area, or, or is this, is this development where there is adequate already existing flood protection? Or are we building and allowing more development in, in the flood plain?
April, April, answer the question. I think that, but, go ahead, April.
So in this area, east of the drain, we have permanent lines of protection built along the drain, so they're east of that drain. We do still need to do a closure, emergency closure, right at the drain crossing of sixty-fourth Avenue, but there's a levee to the north, and there's a levee to the south on the east side. On the west side, there's a levee down to sixty-fourth, and then the remainder of that land is outside city limits.
So if I might get a better clarification, is this above or below the FEMA levels that would require flood insurance?
You know, I haven't looked at this lot in particular. If, even if they're just relocating and moving it in, they would be required to elevate and lomer if there is, you know, that concern on the lot. In addition to the primary line already being in place behind them, they would have to elevate the structure that they're bringing in.
Which, which you're doing, Don, right? So Silver Leaf, uh, development is out there, John, and this has to match that. Any other questions? Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
No.
Mahoney?
Yes. Moving on. Item I, right? Are we there?
Yep.
Zoning change from a single-dwelling residential to an MR dwelling residential, lot one, block six, Valley View Edition. Could you come to the mic, sir? Just, people who watch it on TV can't hear you, so.
My question was, is that you're changing this from agriculture to S two, which is single-family, really? And, but then somebody made a statement about this being multiple dwelling later on? Could this, they add another house if they wanted? As I understand it, if it's single-family, they can't add another house, can they?
Jim will explain that.
The SR two zoning, I believe, requires at least eight thousand square feet of, um, lot size, so if in the future the Kinslers were sold off eight thousand square feet to the north or the south, another lot could be created, and a single-family house could be created. That would require another, um, plat amendment for that. Just as.
That's awesome. Courtesy of the taxpayers of the city of Fargo, they get a bonus lot to sell. Nice.
Thank you.
Moving on to I. Nicole, you're up.
So, uh, next up is, uh, a zoning change from SR four to MR three, Valley View Edition, uh, thirty-nine hundred, fifty-first Street South. Uh, this property was originally zoned, um, SR four, and, um, based on, um, as they, they actually have a building, it's kind of an interesting story, they actually have a building permit, and were starting construction on a townhome project. When they ran into, um, down, we use this land in the two thousand and nine flood as a kind of, um, dig and dump area. And so when they realized that the soil stability needed some extra work, they actually thought redesigned their project. Uh, the applicant is here, if you have any questions, but, um, as such, he's redesigned the project, and MR three is what is being requested. The planning commission did approve this unanimously, and, um, we would be glad to answer any questions.
Is anyone present who wishes to speak regarding this zoning change? Anybody wishes to speak? If not, we'll close that. Can I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Strand.
Mayor, uh, Mahoney, members of the commission, so this initially was intended to be developed for single-family residents.
For townhomes.
For townhomes, yeah. And, and under those qualifications, they could have seventeen units in that, uh, in that area, as I interpret this. With MR three, we can, it'll increase to at least thirty-five units, and if they meet the bonus density provisions, as many as forty-four units. This, this is my concern about, uh, land which we essentially need, uh, across town for single-family homes. And, and again, I'm, I'm not on the same page as, as others about that issue, whether we want more apartments or more homes. But me personally, I'm on the side of more homes, every chance I can. So that'll explain my vote when we get to it, Mr. Mayor Mahoney.
Okay. Any other discussion? Commissioner Garrick.
And just, John, we don't decide that. I mean, we're, we're not here to tell people how to live, or where to live, or that kind of thing. So the market is telling us that we need more people, we have a hundred people a day coming to Fargo. Many of them are young families who can't afford our property taxes. Uh, so if you want more people to live in single-family homes, let's lower property taxes. But we can't dictate, this is an apartment, this is a home, the market's going to tell us that, based on what we're doing.
If I might, Mayor Mahoney?
Go ahead, Commissioner Strand.
We are the policy creators and the policy enforcers. It's not the market that creates the policies that we're, uh, adhering to or, or voting upon.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
No.
Garrick?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Let's take a five-minute break, we've been going at this a little bit, like, see something in this little, come back. I think I'm on J. Yep.
Yep, you are.
We'll call a meeting back to order. How many more public issues do you have, Nicole? Zoning change from a single dwelling residential to a multi-dwelling residential, Lot 1, Block 7, Valley View Edition, first reading rezoning ordinance, 3954th Street South. Nicole Cuthbert to explain.
So this item is right next door to the project you just reviewed, and this is at 3954th Street South, Valley View Edition. Same applicants as previous, K-square developers with BCH builders. The applicant is present, if you have any specific questions for him. Basically, in tandem with the other project, they reconceived their project due to the soil conditions. And in addition, the planning commission reviewed this property for a conditional use permit for a daycare, which is required by the Land Development Code to go through that process. So when the planning commission heard it, they looked at the daycare proposal, which, as a conditional use permit, stops that planning commission. And what's moving forward today is a zoning change from SR4 to MR3. And I will say, while the density, it is important to note the density change, as Commissioner Strand mentioned, that per the Land Development Code and the density standards of what is allowed, you'll notice in your staff report, for a total of 220 units. I'm sure the developer would be glad to talk to that more specifically. When you look at the capacity of what actually fits on the property, it's probably less. And so you often see what is allowed by code and what actually fits based on setbacks and all that, it's less so. But in any case, staff, planning commission did recommend unanimous approval in July, and we'd be glad to answer any questions.
Could you just comment, Planning Commission, as far as Commissioner Strand's concerned about single-family dwellings? What influence does that have on the planning commission? Do they take that into account that we need from that?
Absolutely. Yeah, so if you'll notice in your staff report, I don't have that slide here, but some of our new processes have kind of fallen on, out of place. But you'll notice often in your staff report and in the packet itself or in the PowerPoint, I would highlight the growth plan. The growth plan really sets our long-range vision in that area. Being at 40th Avenue South, Prime Artorial Street, it could probably go either way. It's actually been zoned multiple ways over the time as developers respond to the market. We do, we did receive a letter on this one with concern on the increase in apartments. So it is a topic that the community and public are talking about. Planning Commission in general looks at markets, market needs, and actually, in the history of our work, really depends on the developer to bring forth what they think the need is at that time.
Thank you. Is anyone present who wishes to speak to this zoning change? Is anyone present who wishes to speak? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Strand.
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney, members of the commission. This higher density is only allowed if we approve the change. And we're doing it on a piecemeal fashion, time after time after time. So I'd implore the commission at a minimum to expedite the, and accelerate the revisiting of our planning and zoning policies so we can have an overview, broader approach that's consistent and not happenstance, piece by piece by piece. My preference, if I influence that process, is to advocate for single-family residents. In this instance, when we go from 89 to 220 units, there's just a world of difference there. I'll leave it at that.
Commissioner Grinberg.
Appreciate the perspectives in the debate. I think we have some philosophical differences, you know, at the commission level. We set policy guidelines, the market has the capital. And if, you know, in this case, again, the market's saying, this is what we want to build because we have the market for it. I think maybe a more comprehensive, you know, presentation by Mr. Gilmer and Nicole might be wise, because he sent me some data last week, that he just asked me at break, should I send it to the rest of the commission? I think it'd be good for you to see on the percent of population in single-family versus, you know, apartments over the last 50 years. And so as I'm getting my, you know, getting up to speed with planning and zoning as my department, you know, it may be good for all of us to have that presentation as well at a future meeting and-
And I think it'd be good on that, Tony, if Nicole could show what our plans are, because actually, Commissioner Strand, there are his plans about what goes here and there and there. There's an overall plan and an overall map. It's just the pieces haven't been pieced in, and this is what is actually designed, is you fill in the pieces. There's a, there is a constraint against what's market will bear and what happens, and we already know that, because a lot of people did 80-foot lots, those aren't selling. 40-foot lots are selling. What do you do if you're plotted for an 80-foot lot with infrastructure in there? You can't just tear that apart and put two lots there. It's very hard to do. So to your question, John, we should have a good discussion about that. And I think, Commissioner Grinberg, you suggested that maybe have a Brown Bay and go through a discussion of that.
I think that would be very important, and just as editorial, and I've had conversations with a few developers over the last, my first month. And, you know, we talk about affordable housing and the FM home builders' effort to, you know, move forward to affordable housing. Let's drive around to some of the small communities. Housing developments are popping up in a lot of the small towns and continue to advance around us. And I hear from developers, there's two reasons. It's the cost of the lot and the infrastructure cost. It's not the cost to build the house. And so we have to be sensitive, you know, to, we look at, you know, the part of the land costs and how we maybe have involvement with, you know, that discussion as well. Because if they're right, if that's what's going on in the market around us, some of that we can control at policy with infrastructure costs, for example.
Mr. Strand.
Thank you, Commissioner Grinberg. I appreciate that thought. And it's my general sense, 56% of Fargoans live in apartments. And with regard to people going out to outlying neighborhoods, they used to call that voting with your feet, you know, where you just choose to live or so on. So I think this will be a valuable discussion for us to have about what are the values we adhere to and uphold with the type of community we want to evolve going into the future, homeownership or apartments as a general rule.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Strand.
No.
Garrick.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye. Item K, appeal the Board of Adjustment's decision on a variance request on 1524 8th Street South to allow proposed detached garage to encroach two feet into the required interior side setback, denied by the Board of Adjustment on 63016. Nicole Cuthbert to explain.
I'm having a little technical difficulty here. Well, it'll work for now, so keep moving. So the, basically in front of you tonight is an appeal from the Board of Adjustment. And the Board of Adjustment is the appointed commission to hear variances on dimensional standards. And so they have a tight criteria that both staff and the Board of Adjustment have to follow. So often, by the time they get in front of you as a city commission, they're appealing a decision because, again, to meet the hardship requirements, as mentioned in the Century Code and the Land Development Code, is very, very difficult. But often, you'll hear situations like in this case where an application, an applicant, a homeowner, has a special appeal for you to hear. And as Commissioner Williams would often quote, staff's hands and the Board of Adjustment's hands are pretty much tied based on the criteria we have in the code book. And so it's really up to your consideration. So the case in front of you tonight is a single-family house at 1524 8th Street South, and they are looking to adjust the side setback for a detached garage. They want to build a new detached garage. There's an existing one there today that's on an existing property line, or that's one foot off the property line. The existing, the new garage, if they're following our Land Development Codes, where we require three feet from the property line. And so they basically want to construct a 30 by 26-foot detached garage, enlarging the existing footprint and maintain the one-foot setback off of the, I think it's the south property line. And I think I'll actually ask, Aaron, do you want to work on the PowerPoint so I can use it while I talk and answer any questions? So basically, the planning, or the Board of Adjustment voted 3-2 against this, and the, and so the applicant has appealed that decision. And so you're asked to treat this as a new case and hear it fresh for the first, like, fresh for the first time. So I know the applicant is here today, if you would like to answer any questions. Just here's the graphic where basically you see the property line, the garage is tucked in the far right-hand corner, and you can see the one-foot setback there. So I'd be glad to answer any questions and be glad to walk through the criteria, if you'd like to do that, and most specifics. Basically, what the criteria asks staff and the Board of Adjustment to do is if there's any other alternative, then, then we can vote for it, or then there's not another, if there's another alternative, for instance, he could build a new garage, he's building a brand-new garage anyway, he could build it three feet off. And so when you do, if you do decide to support his request, it should just be noted that it's establishing precedent. And so you may see other additional garage requests.
Nicole, what's, is there a fence on the property line? How does he move the one-inch or the one-foot distance?
I would actually ask the applicant to answer any specific questions.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a couple of quick questions? So basically, it's, the old one is 414 square feet, the new one is 780 square feet. That's according to my Math 100 from Fargo North High School. So-
Did you well.
Yeah. And so my question is, I'm concerned about the precedent of people filling up their backyards with garages instead of having, is it appropriate to fit with the other? That's, I guess that's my concern. It's their own property and all that, but is it being compatible with the rest of the neighbors? And that's, I guess that's my main thing. And my question for Nicole is, could they build an existing similar-sized garage and not have to get this waiver?
Correct, yes.
So they could do that, but it's just the, it's the whole, okay, thank you.
Yeah, one president wants to speak to this. Is a builder-owner here?
Good evening. I started this process a few months ago and a little, did I know that I'd be in front of the city commission, but happy to be here. David Gadberry.
Thank you.
But anyway, the one piece that I'd like to be known is that the garage itself that I, the new structure I'd like to build is exactly in the same footprint on the south-side setback. You know, and I'm just trying to maximize the space on these 50-foot lots. So basically, it's a 50-foot lot, my garage is 18-foot wide. I want to build a 26-foot wide. If I can't get the variance, I would build a 24. But to maximize two big vehicles in that space there, I'd like to do the 26-foot.
Who's concerned how it fits with the neighborhood? How does it fit with the neighborhood?
There are actually three-stall garages on my block, too. And a lot of the garages that are in that neighborhood, I'd say at least 60% of the garages are in the same scenario that mine is, or they're actually on the line. So I'd be welcome to give anybody a tour and show them exactly what I'm talking about, but it's a, it's a tight, it's a tight squeeze, but there's a lot of people that have larger garages than what I'm proposing, too.
Any questions by the commission?
50-foot lots?
50-foot lot, yes. So it's 150 deep and it's 50 wide.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicole, we talked about this earlier today, and you said something about a lot of homeowners do try to do two-car garages to make it more solvable at the end?
Yeah, it's not uncommon for the Board of Adjustment to listen to, specifically the older neighborhoods, expansion of these garages. A year ago, you appointed a Land Development Code Task Force for residential land uses, and they've been studying this case, and we're this close to providing some recommendations. They talk more about the scale and the size of garages, not necessarily the setback. So we are starting to queue up some recommendations on considering, we understand in modern times, we want to keep people in their houses and build, you know, as opposed to try to find a new house somewhere else that would meet, you know, kind of current, modern standards.
Keep them in their home.
Yeah, so. So that's the trouble. And you'll notice the 3-2 vote at the Board of Adjustment as such.
So does it take a supermajority to go over the bill?
Yes, it does.
It does, okay. Commissioner Strand.
Mayor Mahoney, members of the commission, I'm just curious if those anticipated changes could conceivably accommodate Mr. Gadberry's plans.
Ironically, no. We, we considered, the Land Development Code Task Force did consider that, and they kind of went around in a couple circles and came down to, that three-foot setback really is considered, you know, minimal to, both to get through and if you think about the imposition on the abutting property owners, when we're talking about bigger garages. So what the Land Development Code Task Force really got into is allowing for bigger-scale garages, if that makes any sense.
Any other discussion? Can I have a motion?
Well, I see the suggestive motion. I want to allow them to do this. So would I not, would I?
Moved it and I-
I want to approve it, so would I?
Yeah, move to approve the variance.
I'd move to approve the variance.
Is there a second? Hearing no second. Can I have another motion? We do have to act on this tonight.
Move to accept the recommendation for denial.
Is there a second?
Second.
Clarification on that? You need a 4-1 vote. Just Eric to help me bear through this is, if we do not get the four votes, then what happens?
So you need four votes for the approval of the variance?
Three votes to deny.
Yeah, right.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Garrick.
No.
Mahoney.
No.
Next item. Yeah, we're off the public hearings. Okay, let's go back. Kent's up. You've been waiting for this all night. State Water Commission requests cost reimbursement for FM diversion flood project, cost totaling $3,681,747, and B, cost totaling $6,900,000. Kent Costin to explain.
Yes, thank you, commissioners. Again, this is our monthly reimbursement request for expenditures incurred in the month of June. of June. The one that's labeled as 3.6 million is for recurring expenses for the, for the project. And you'll, you'll also know that we just recently signed, or the diversion authority just signed a new cost participation agreement with the State Water Commission in the amount of $69 million. And pursuant to the legislation that was passed for that, there's a 10% cap on the administrative costs associated with the project. So, this reimbursement request, the one that's at 6.9 million, is basically doing a kind of a super scoop in arrears, if you will, to recover the eligible administrative costs that are allowed under the legislation. So, we're drawing all our costs all at once. I think they go back as far as 2012, and again...
This is money we've already spent, you're getting that money back to the City of Fargo.
That's correct. So, we'd ask for your approval of both of those cost reimbursements so that we can move that money along.
Any questions? Can I have a motion?
Move for approval?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm just, I just, I'm, I'm going to vote no, just because of the Oxbow stuff. I support everything else, but I just, especially the Oxbow Country Club, that, that doesn't seem very good expenditures of our taxpayer, City of Fargo taxpayer money.
Thank you.
I would just like, I've never heard a finance expert use the terminology of a super scoop.
That, that's a non-accounting term. That's a very large reimbursement request.
It's a new one.
To the state of North Dakota.
Lot of money for us. A roll call vote, please.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, sorry. Mayor Mahoney, members of the commission, I'm just curious about the second item. Am I not reading this, or am I reading this correctly, that there is inclusion there for, for land acquisition services for the Oxbow Hickson-Baki appraisals and so on? And does that contradict or not the state intent of legislation that this funding was, I'm loosely interpreting this in my head, that it was intended for internal projects in the city?
No.
No, I don't, I don't believe so with regard to that, and then also with regard to how the, the project has moved along with the preparation of the joint powers agreement. All of this flood control activity is being rolled into one comprehensive project. So, they would be eligible administrative expenses based upon the listing that's there.
If I might continue, then why in the first proposal, 38, does it say not applicable for land purchases part of the buyouts in the Oxbow, in, in the Hickson-Baki ring levy?
I'm not sure.
He's asking why land wasn't eligible in part of the bill? There's two parts to that which you could apply for in, in Oxbow buyouts?
Yeah, the, the housing, under the way the bills are written, the housing we can use for local share match, you know, matching component. And so we would be drawing it in that regard. And I think if it's, if it's an administrative expense or a soft cost related to the process of ac, acquiring the property, that's likely as the accountant put it in as an administrative cost, and they would look at that, and I would presume that they would fund that.
Which item are you going to, John, A or B?
Mayor Mahoney, it's on A, and it's on what would be our third page, which is the breakdown of, of applicable, or, you know, breakdown of costs. The very last one is land purchased as part of the home buyouts related to the Oxbow Hickson-Baki ring levy project. But that appears, as I interpret that, it's not applicable or not, doesn't apply? I'm just curious about this, because in this instance, it doesn't apply, and the next section, the, that, the service provision costs do apply for reimbursement.
So, you're looking at the, the first reimbursement for the 3.6 million and looking at the detail of the disbursements that are included?
Yes, and that one, the last item in the project descriptions, the only one in there that's not in the project numbers and descriptions, that's...
I wonder, I wonder if that's just not, there's not a project number, so it's not applicable.
Is that what that?
Is that what that means, Kent?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm having difficulty following the detail here. I'm just looking at the disbursements list, and I'm not seeing, is there a specific amount?
John, could you show them your page you're looking at so we can see it?
This, right, the very last one, the third page.
Oh, I, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, I think that's a pretty easy explanation. Sorry for stumbling on that. Basically, we just keep an ongoing spreadsheet of land acquisitions and such, and when it says NA, it just simply means we haven't assigned a specific tracking code, and, and we are still tracking the land acquisitions associated with that. It's just that our numbering system doesn't pick it up that way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, basically, it's money we have spent already, and what we're trying to, for a long time, the state would not trigger the money that they would give to us until the federal project, they put some federal money into it. So, now Kent's trying to get back is a lot of the monies that we've already spent on this. So, it's, what's only eligible, so we cannot apply for anything that the state will not give us. So, what he's already qualified with the state is these things that we've put forth that they will pay us money for it. And they're very strict, I think, Kent, you need to explain that, Commissioner Strand as well, the state is pretty strict about what you can apply for or not.
Yeah, they, they certainly do scrutinize this, and, and I just, I wanted to reach out and give kudos to the state of North Dakota and the State Water Commission. It happens to be their, end of their fiscal year, they're very quick and efficient with processing these payment requests. So, in the last couple of months, we've recovered millions of dollars related to this project, and so it's just nice to see that, that cooperation between the state and North Dakota and, and our project is being one of the largest projects in the state is working as intended. So, we're, we're real pleased with that.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Nope.
Mahoney?
Aye. Second part is execute agreements with Wells Fargo to provide short-term financing for FM diversion and intergovernmental agreement with Cass County. Kent Costin to explain.
As you all know, the FM diversion team and the Board of Authority celebrated the signing of the project participation agreement with, with the feds recently, I think about three weeks ago. And with that, your finance team has been working hard in the background. We've actually been working on this second round of financing since May, and the months seem to fly by relatively quickly. But we have a proposal before you tonight where, where we are recommending a $100 million loan on behalf of the City of Fargo for continuation funding of the diversion project. And to help explain that a little bit, as joint partners, Cass County and the City of Fargo, last year we each issued $50 million apiece to fund that project, we borrowed money, and we spent that money. And now we're into our next fiscal year, and we intend to spend more money. So, we are borrowing, or in, in the process of borrowing. This particular proposal, again, would, Cass County, I think just this afternoon, just approved identical agreements here. So, Cass County is going to borrow 100 million, and the City of Fargo would borrow 100 million. The form and the type of this type of loan would be considered a sales tax revenue note. It is not a general obligation of the City of Fargo. It does not bind you with regard to taxation or property tax impact, it is simply a revenue note. It is also designed intentionally to be a short-term note. These two notes, there's actually two notes that would be executed here, two, in, in the amount of $50 million each, total of 100. They mature on 2017 and 2018. They were staggered intentionally to be able to kind of have a little bit of flexibility in not having all these loans coming due on the same fiscal year. So, with that, the proposal, we had reached out to US Bank, who had the prior financing for the diversion, that was done on a competitive basis. We also reached out to the state's public finance authority and asked about their interest and also their ability to execute this type of debt. We were denied on that basis in that they didn't feel comfortable doing that at the state level. Their involvement is typically more long-term financing, so this is short-term financing. There was also some issues with the bank in North Dakota not being competitive with the market rates that they would charge us. They're charging, or proposed to charge a 3% fee, whereas this one would be somewhere around 1%. So, the finance committee of the, of the diversion authority will be looking at this, but again, it's the city and the county that are borrowing the money on behalf of the diversion. Because the diversion doesn't have the authority to borrow money, we, as local sponsors, will be putting money into the coffers to take care of the needs there. There, there was a variety of documents that were pushed your way. I do apologize with regard to that, there was some confusion at the dawn of the hour about the, the final form of the documents, but I believe as of today, you had all the documents. The bond council was just wrapping up the final presentation of the resolutions, I handed those to you tonight. But long story short, we're asking for your approval to proceed with borrowing this $100 million on behalf of the City of Fargo, and we're also asking you to approve an intergovernmental agreement, an extension or an amendment of an existing agreement, so that we can continue to cooperate with Cass County with regard to the diversion. And we think this is a very good loan, and it's a very competitive price with regard to the interest rate. And I had to ask, we have two officials from Wells Fargo here today, Tom Reb, or, Tom, excuse me, Tom Harkless and Paul Rebholdz from Minneapolis and Milwaukee. And I'd be happy to answer questions about the form of this, but I just thought it would be appropriate in light of the fact that this ultimately is a $200 million loan, that's a sizable loan for our community, and I just wanted to have them make a few comments about what they learned about Fargo during the, this last three or four months as far as executing this type of agreement. So, they've done a...
Are they going to say nice things about you?
No, I'm not asking for that, but I, I mean, it's important to understand the underwriting process.
Sure.
Our experience has been, we issue a lot of bonds, and we, and that just gets sold out to Wall Street, and then they give us the money, that's a pretty easy, pretty efficient process. Working with the banking industry, I'm learning is a little bit more of a negotiation and ongoing, these loan agreements need to get drafted and executed, and you need to agree to all those terms and conditions. So, I just want the commission to know that, that there's a, a very in-depth study by whoever chooses to provide a financing option for this project. This is a very large project, it's national in scale, and we're very pleased that Wells Fargo as our banking partners, that have been for years, are able to give us a very competitive proposal. So, first I'd answer any questions you'd have, and then I would ask Tom or Paul to come up and just say a few words.
Sure, let, let them say something, they've been good partners for us, and we're pleased they stepped up. I like the interest rate, John was wondering if maybe we could get house loans from you or something for single-family homes, John, would that be good?
The answer to that would be no. That, that rate the city got was actually, and the county got was actually a very good rate. I think we're 25 basis points under the US Bank rate that they offered on the two-year, and I think we're quite a bit under the, what the state was offering. You know, Mr. Mayor and commission members, my name's Tom Harkless. I work with Wells Fargo's government banking team, and Wells has been a bank to the city and the county for many years. We, as Kent noted, while the loan is not a general obligation of the city or the county, you know, we think the positive trend and the direction of the city and its credit profile make us confident in, in giving you that good rate and, and extending the loan. And we're very happy to be part of this significant project for the region and the people in it. Paul, if you want to say anything?
Appreciate that.
I'm Paul Rebholdz, also with Wells Fargo in our public finance department. I'll be brief. Tom said everything really that there is to say other than thank you. We're, we appreciate the opportunity to work with the city and with the diversion authority and with the county. And from a credit profile standpoint, he's right, I mean, we're very excited about the region, the growth, and the sales tax coverage that you have on this is, is quite spectacular, actually. So, we appreciate the opportunity to work with you, and we will say great things about Kent later.
Okay, thanks.
Right, right after you guys call the question.
Okay. We're just glad the financial institution sees us as a strong partner, so we appreciate that very much. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Mr. Gary?
We have to pay this back, this back with our sales tax. We are voting soon to extend our sales tax. If the people of Fargo don't vote to extend the sales tax, can we pay back the loan?
Yeah, the short answer to that is yes, absolutely. That was a thing that was evaluated at great length by Wells Fargo. They're, they obviously are very concerned about putting $200 million into this deal and not having the ability to pay back. But the coverage ratio between now and the election is strong enough to surpass standard industry coverage ratio, so there's no challenges there. And, you know, we look forward to that vote in November.
Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. Commissioner Gary, I was curious about the same question of the capacity to pay this loan, these loan monies back with the existing sales taxes in place, and as I'm hearing it, that's yes? That we do have the capacity with existing sales taxes, if, if they aren't extended, we still have the capacity? Is that, am I hearing that correctly?
That is correct.
$200 million, and part of this 200 million will be to pay off the first loan?
Yes, the, between the city and the county, that 100 million that we borrowed last year will be paid off in full, and there'll be another 100 million that'll come in as new money into the project.
If I might just learn more, what were the terms of that loan as, as presented to the commission, then? Were, were they anticipated to be turned into general revenue bonds, then, or, or, or was it intended just to be a short-term loan replaced by another short-term loan later that's bigger, or what were the, what was the understanding then?
With regard to the structure, we always anticipated the need to do kind of a construction or bridge financing. You know, as we started this project, we didn't even have a PPA, and so we didn't have certainty of that, so we've kind of been working our way towards long-term financing. The other issue that tripped us up a little bit, and that has since passed, was there was a lawsuit with regard to the Special Assessment District, and a local attorney took that to the state Supreme Court, and that has now been cleared. And so, during this interim time, when our budget is 200 million for this fiscal year, we, we were in need of working capital, if you will, to fund that budget. So, we did anticipate at least a couple of rounds of short-term financing, and they were structured, structured as variable-rate loans, as the lowest form of financing, anticipating within two or three years that we'll flip these into long-term, either special assessment bonds or some, some other sales tax obligation, once the sales tax extension has been approved. So, there, there is a master plan, and all of this does dovetail into our financial plan for the diversion project.
Mr. Mayor Mahoney and commissioners, if I might just continue to, Mr., Mr. Johnson, is this all statutorily allowable? I'm, I'm assuming so, but I, I'm not familiar with government subdivisions borrowing money on a short-term basis, so, and some people have questioned out there whether there's legal authority to do that, I'm just needing confirmation of that.
Yes, there is authority.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff that's gone on before this, Commissioner Strand, so it is hard to catch up, and sometimes we take it and trust that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, but initially, we knew we had to do some short-term borrowing, and there was a big concern on the commission not to have that tax into our regular tax base issues, so. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Steve Sprague or Terry Springer? Can you explain the, this was the discussion we had last commission meeting on gaming. I think Commissioner Strand wanted to make sure everybody knew about it, and I think that has been distributed to all the other people, and you're going to explain what's going on.
On Tuesday, after the last commission meeting, my office sent out notices to, to the 19 charities that, that we have here in Fargo, and informed them that tonight the commission would be hearing this. We do have one, one, you know, the applicant or the, the requister, I guess, from Team Makers, and then, my understanding is we have some gentleman here from Red River Human Services, correct? And so, I guess with that, unless you have any questions?
Have them come up and speak, please.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, my name is Rick Stenseth, I'm representing Team Makers Club today. Last meeting, you heard our executive director, Pat Simmers, talk a little bit about why we propose this change to the gambling guidelines. If I could just briefly revisit that, we've been approached by a number of entities that are not currently offering gaming that would like to get involved with, with us and offer gaming. And these specific entities were involved in raffles, Calcutta's, and even pull tab dispensing machines. So, we looked at the five-site limit that the city instituted a few years back and thought, should we propose to raise that site limit in order to allow us an opportunity? Because right now, we have five sites in the, in the City of Fargo. We have the BSA, we have the Fargo Dome, Lucky Thirteens, Frank's Lounge, and the Holiday Inn. So, we don't... So we don't have any more future opportunities. So we thought, well, that's an approach maybe we could take to expand the site limit. And then we thought, well, maybe it's a little bit better to keep things a little more closed in. So we looked at the particular game types and we came up with this proposal for the three different game types to, in the city of Fargo's definition of a site, not be counted against the five-site limit. The state allows any organization in the state to have up to 25 gambling sites and, you know, so we're not to follow that, although their definition is anything that's gaming is a gaming site. But this body has the opportunity to determine what goes on inside the city. You know, we looked at, again, like you said, we looked at our raffles, at the Fargo Dome and the BSA for basketball games. They're intermittent, they're not all year round, they're-- they take up a site space. We look at a pull tab dispensing machine, or I'm sorry, a Calcutta. The Calcutas that occur, be they bowling, be they darts, be they pool, be they golf, they only happen occasionally and it's not one of those daily occurrences. Pull tab dispensing machines are not operated by employees for the most part. There might be an odd one out there somewhere where they involve an employee, but they're in agreement with the host location to run the games, basically. And we do the paperwork and we handle the deposits and the tax returns and all that stuff, but they operate the games, so we don't even have staff there. So when we were looking at this and what should we maybe consider discluding from a full-blown gaming site, we came up with these three opportunities that we thought we should put out there for the commission to consider as opposed to considering additional sites, which could include bingo, blackjack, pull tabs, paddle wheels, what most people would consider more a casino activity. And I think that about sums it up. I have talked with, since the commissioners asked that the information went out, I did follow up with a couple people, also talked to a couple other organizations. And while they're not here to speak, I can say that they had no issues with what we're doing. I think the gentlemen from Red River Human Services have some concerns, which that's-- you'll hear those shortly and we're not trying to rock the boat or anything here and we're not trying to kick anybody out of any other site, but we're just looking ahead down the road as things expand. We're getting a lot more of these mall sites, if you will, for liquor establishments, beer pubs, liquor pubs, things that are not what we've traditionally known as potential gaming sites. So, you know, we're not looking for tomorrow to do anything tomorrow, but just as long as we're going to visit the issue, let's talk about it and let's see what we can set it up for the long term. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the commission. For the record, my name is Tom Newberger. I'm the executive director for Red River Human Services Foundation here in Fargo. We have services in various communities and we support people with intellectual and developmental disabilities and we have charitable gaming. We have a couple of sites here in town. And as Rick Stenseth mentioned, and I have a great deal of respect for Rick, he knows the laws and the rules much better than myself, but I do oppose the changes that are being proposed. And the reason for that is this will allow the larger charities to get even larger. And what that will do is take opportunities such-- take opportunities away from organizations like ours and new organizations coming in. From a historical perspective, this commission has been very, very generous to charitable gaming organizations. Back in the eighties, the city of Fargo, approved by the commission, allowed providers, gaming operators, to have two gaming sites. And then the Flying J was built on 32nd Avenue, 929, and there was a gaming operator there and they had two in Fargo. And when they were annexed, there was a problem. So the city of Fargo said, okay, three sites. In 2013 or 2014, the commission was very generous again and said, no, we'll allow you five gaming sites. And now what's happening with this proposed change is it will allow the larger organizations that already have-- excuse me, have five sites to even get bigger, which again will take away potentially from organizations like ours that support people with disabilities, people, organizations that support people that have alcoholic problems or, like Senator Highcamp was talking, there might be a new charity that comes in and wants to help out with drug problems. And so I did share with Rick beforehand that there's maybe a compromise that we could reach with the proposed change. And basically, what that compromise that we threw out was just to delete the word "pull tab dispensing device." And that's the one where we operate at the Elks in North Fargo, that counts as one of our sites and it is a good site, it earns some money for us. And so I would be fine if we left raffles and Calcutas in, if we just pulled out the pull tab dispensing devices. And again, a lot of respect for Rick, I've worked with him for years and years, good person, but again, we're looking at it slightly different than Team Makers.
Thank you.
Yes.
Steve, could you explain what change that would do, the change he's asking?
Well, the request from Playmakers was for those three types of games. Without that, the pull tab dispensing devices are the ones where they're operated by the bar or the site, you know, the organization. So if we just took out raffles and Calcutas, it would offer a few more opportunities, but probably not quite as many as if we left in the pull tab dispensing devices. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Well, my curiosity is, running in South Dakota, they almost had a gaming site in every gas station, so it was interesting to me that it seemed like a lot of people were benefiting from that. So is the idea behind this is that you could have pull tabs in every bar in town with different sponsors?
Well, and, you know, maybe Rick could speak to it a little, you know, a little better, but my understanding of it is that with the pull tab dispensing devices, they're operated by the bars or, you know, by the organization that's hosting that. They can be put in for $3,000 to $5,000, whereas a full, you know, full setup gaming with blackjack and the paddle wheels and those things with the monitoring, electronic monitoring they have to do and various other things, they're closer to $50,000 and higher dollars for installing a full-blown gaming site. So I think that was part of the reason, but maybe Rick can speak to it a little better.
I'd be happy to try to. Mr. Mayor, commissioners, the first thing about the-- the first question about sites, you need to have a liquor license of a certain sort in order to have a gambling of any type in your casino, charitable gambling or whatever else is allowed by local permit. It isn't the goal to have one everywhere, it's just to look ahead and to see if we can serve, if anyone can serve, these individuals who are opening these new places who, you know, whether they come to us first or they come to someone else, I mean, they want to go with an organization that they're comfortable and happy with, no matter their, you know, if they personally have a feeling about a group or a cause or whatever, that's certainly the bar owner's prerogative to go wherever they want. And our main focus was on the Calcutas and the raffles and we're one of just a couple organizations that have used up all of our five-site allotment. There's a number of organizations out there that have opportunities under the five-site limit and they're not-- they haven't been able to take advantage of them. Not that they're not looking, not that they're not curious, just that they haven't been approached and they haven't been able to use those. So again, that's why it's out there, it's for you folks to discuss and--
So, Mr. Mayor, Rick--
Commissioner Grinberg.
If I heard you right, then you're agreeing with the compromise to allow you to do Calcutta and raffles and allow things to remain the same with pull tabs?
I would prefer that it passes as we presented. We can make it work, but I would venture to guess we'll come back again, years down the road when we-- or maybe even a year from now.
And I'm, you know, this is a tough one. I mean, of all things we deal with, a hundred-million-dollar loan package, you know, this is where the reality of what people's services and the good work of various organizations do. And so if there's a willingness to compromise here, maybe we see how this goes for a while and, you know, it's hard to say--
I understand--
My personal opinion is, people won't go to a site because of the organization, they go because of their friends are meeting at this bar and there happened to be a pull tab, so let's throw 20 bucks in and see what we can do. So I don't know how much of a draw it is, but that's just me. But if there's a willingness to compromise with the nonprofits, at least at this juncture, that's important to me.
Oh, I totally understand the commissioner's position and, you know, that's why it's out there. We, in the industry, you know, we understand it because we're in it, we're in it for years. Tom and I have been in it for years. We don't always agree on how the industry, we think the industry should proceed. This is obviously one of those instances and should the, you know, the wisdom of the commission say we're going to do two of these or all three, we're going to abide by it. But, you know, ideally, if we were going to just come up and ask for what we'd really like to see, we'd like to see it go from five to seven sites. So we feel like that our, what we're offering up is a compromise to that more open request. So as long as the commission is, you know, considering and it has all the information it needs, whatever the decision is, we're certainly comfortable with and will abide by.
Any other--
Mr. Chairman, just a credit to Commissioner Strand, he's the one that asked for this to be tabled to make sure. And tonight we have, you know, make sure coming real on us, you know, so.
If I might, the one of the other questions that came up last time and Pat didn't address was the potential cost to the city of additional sites. Additional sites are going to happen one way or the other, you know, whether it's through an organization that has not been in gaming before or whether it's to occur, one, expanding their operations, those costs are going to be incurred over time, no matter what. So this particular, I don't think this particular request has a serious fiscal impact, certainly not immediately.
Commissioner Strand.
Mayor Mahoney, I would like to move that we approve the change to the gaming guidelines as presented, including however only raffles and Calcutas.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Rule call vote, please.
Strand.
Yes.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Gary.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Now, we're going to go to item 34, 40, 40, right? Or that was withdrawn?
Have we done 34 through 37?
34.
Yep, 34.
Oh, I have to-- 34.
Did you lose it?
Yeah, last one on here, I'll find it eventually. So 34 is application for abatement or refund of taxes, 4455 Maybyer, the Robert Hill Law Limited, representing store master funding, 622 chap-- at 2121 Forty-third Street South. Requesting valuation, 215 be reduced from $7,364,500 to $5,638.50. Denial recommended by the assessment department. Ben Huska.
Good afternoon, commissioners. The next three agenda items, 34, 36, and 37, are four abatements that have been filed to appeal the value of three properties. These are somewhat similar to the appeals that you hear at the Board of Equalization meeting every year. If you recall, this year, when our notices went out, we got about 660 informal appeals, which is another way you can appeal in North Dakota. A handful of those came to your Board of Equalization and appealed at the board. An abatement is another form of formal appeal in North Dakota besides the informal and the Board of Equalization appeals. Once an applicant appeals through the abatement process, that sets up a meeting before the city commission. Your action is a recommendation to the Cass County Commission that actually acts on the Just for your information, I did get a couple of calls when a few of you saw this item on the agenda asking about the appeals of these properties and they are not the local property owners that have filed the appeal. It isn't Hornbuckers, it's not the local people from Gander Mountain. It's a property tax attorney and a consulting firm that has filed on all three of these properties, all four of these abatements. So I don't know if you want, what I have provided to you is a brief summary of our review of our valuation on these properties, basically looking at two different things. One is based on what sales we do have of similar properties, how our current value sits in that range of sale price values. And the other is how we have other similar properties valued, if we are consistent and there's some equalization in our valuations. The methods that we arrived at for these properties is the same that we arrived at for all other similar properties.
So what's the pleasure of the commission? Do you want Ben to go through all that or do you want to make a motion in regards to this? Our assessment commission is, your group has done a very good job, assessment department on all the properties in town, seem to be doing the right, finding the right property.
I can certainly go through each, or if you have questions on any of the individual write-ups that I provided, and then I would--
So on item 34--
Suggest an opportunity for the applicant to--
34, is there a motion or--
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion on 34. I'll make the suggested motion. And the other thing I'd add is that we got some information even today and so the people that are-- that want to have more explanation, they can also talk to the county too, correct?
That's correct.
This is just part of the process and so I guess that's my comment. I'll make the suggested motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ben, just for the rest, the commissioners have just explained that they do have an opportunity to go up before the county on this.
Right. The, I guess, my recommendations to deny all three of these items is due to the fact that the information before you submitted by the applicant, as of the agenda deadline for this meeting, we do not feel meets the burden of proof to override our valuations and refund the taxes based on the requested values. This in no way prevents the application, the applicant, from presenting more information or evidence to the county when the hearing is at the county. And it in no way binds the county to your recommendation. The county simply needs to consider your recommendation, but it is the duty of the county to act on the information that's provided to them at their hearing.
Is the attorney for the Robert Hill Law here?
Yes, I am.
Do you want to make a statement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Robert Hill from Robert Hill Law. I spent seventh grade in Grand Forks at Valley Junior High, so I know a little bit about this side of the river and cheer for East Grand Forks, played against Fargo-Shanley and lived, so in those days, they were really good. What we'd really like to do, I have with me Sue Graham from Cresta Partners, which is an acronym, Commercial Real Estate Service Advisors. Cresta represents all of these companies nationwide, so it's not just here in Fargo. And our view is, the burden is on us, and so we went ahead and hired an MAI out of Chicago, a guy named Michael Marousse, that is very well-known and he's very well-respected. And our hope always is when we bring these appraisals to the assessors, that we get into a room and discuss valuation and appraisal theory and market trends face-to-face. We'd still like to do that here. And the issue is, if we have to spend the resources necessary to get the, a full-blown appraisal done and digested, it does take time. And so there has been, this meeting was scheduled and we got the appraisals, most of them anyway, in last Thursday, but there has not been enough time for any of the members of the commission to digest that. So my suggestion would be if the county is going to have to hear this anyway, that at this point, that no determination's made one way or the other as to what, with respect to the assessments. Just to give one example, the Super Value Warehouse that's here and is the subject of one of these three, is about a 40-year-old building. It doesn't have the clear heights that the market needs these days and it competes with buildings that do. There is all kinds of market activity that's going on with respect to distribution warehouses. Ironically enough, the assessment that was on this property two years ago, which was roughly about 13 million, is exactly where our appraiser's coming in today. So we're not really complaining about paying our fair share of taxes because quite frankly, our fair share, at least as the assessor saw it two years ago, was 13 million dollars. What we are, what we are basically objecting to is the 33% increase that's occurred in the last two years because it's just not in line with what's happening out there for industrial warehouses, particularly ones that are older and need to be retrofitted and don't have the clear heights that the market demands. So, but having said all that, we can certainly have discussions with the city assessor and certainly with the county assessor and the county board. But what I don't want is to give the county commissioners the impression that this has been looked at and that your recommendation is based on the substance of it because that actually would not, I don't think, be fair to either side and I think it would probably send the wrong signal. But I have spoken with Eric Johnson and our hope is to keep coming up here and working with your staff and hopefully reaching a compromise before we even have to go to that county board. But I really, I really wouldn't like the county board to hear that you guys have already said that there's no-- there's no validity to what we're requesting. And I have Sue Grimm here, in case you want to ask any questions substantively.
Thank you.
I have a question for Ben. Hearing what he just said, you know, what I understood him say was that they're going to now do a full-blown, you know, look at what this is going to cost. Would you see any value in that at all?
Actually, the, this process started with the first abatement they filed on the Osgood Hornbuckers in October of 2014, and we've kept getting delays with the idea that more of this support evidence would be coming forward, and here we are almost two years later. Friday, we received one of the appraisals that they ordered. Today, two of them, which obviously didn't give us time to review. We certainly will review them before it goes to the county, because I presume they're going to, in a timely fashion, present these to the county when the hearing is set. So yes, we will be going through these, and we will discuss with them our review of these appraisals, but this market evidence, for instance, on the super value distribution, you don't have any of that analysis in front of you. What you have is a sales grid and three photos of many warehouses that is nothing like that facility. So that's what you're acting on today.
And your analysis continues, you know, next year you'll do the same thing. So for me, you know, they have the opportunity next year to come back, and if you have a full-blown, you know-
So what we will do is review those appraisals, and have probably more of a detailed write-up than we have. I mean, the write-up we gave you is based on the information that they provided initially. We will add to that our review of those appraisals when this is heard at the county. And that's why we're recommending that you act tonight, based on the information you have before you, and we will, if we feel that the review of those appraisals would warrant another recommendation from our office, we would certainly forward that to the county, saying that based on our additional review, we recommend something different, if that's the case.
Any other questions? Commissioner Strand.
Mayor Mahoney, members of the commission, I'm just curious if Mr. Hill, how fast could you expedite this process if you were given the opportunity to sit down and talk it over? How long a delay, or could you do it immediately?
We could do it immediately. Actually, the Hornbucker, the one grocery store, the appraisal was set up here on June twenty-fourth, and one of the others was sent up on Thursday. I think we could get up here, quite frankly, even if we could have a thirty-day before any recommendation was made, at least we'd have time to have a dialogue with full-blown appraisals. You know, one of the things that is hard for taxpayers is, it costs a lot of money to hire appraisers, especially out of Chicago. And we hire the best for a reason. He's not bought and paid for. He scans his market like he does any other, and works for municipalities in Illinois. So we started out with Cressa giving analysis, and that was rejected, and we were told that there would be no discussions unless we had full-blown appraisal, so that's what we've now gone ahead and done. And we want to continue to work with the assessor. So I would say that if the, if we're going to have a substantive discussion on the merits, I think it would behoove everybody to at least give us a couple of weeks, if not a month. To be honest about it, it's very hard. Appraisers are like herding cats. If anybody's old enough to remember that old Super Bowl commercial about the cowboy herding cats, well, appraisers work, you know, they promise, this guy delivered on time, but unfortunately, it has not given any of us time to look at all the comps and to adjust to, and to hear from the assessor in terms of what comps he's relying on. So that dialogue has still got to take place, no matter what, whether we do it before you guys act or after, but I'd prefer to have it before you guys, before the commission acts.
Commissioner Strand.
Mayor Mahoney and Commissioners, you know, I remember when our school district locally had a difference of opinion about evaluation of a land property at Fifty-second Avenue, that we had very, there was a big difference between who thought the property was worth what. And yet that required a negotiated approach to find a resolution, much like with other, any other activities, that I think the more welcoming and understanding and accommodating we can be to businesses, and giving you every fair shake we can, is a good value, but I'd prefer this, unlike the August fifteenth agenda, no later than the August twenty-ninth agenda, if that were the case, and you have your chance, and if you don't make it, you just don't get there, and you'll understand where we're at.
And we'll just move on to the county, and I agree with you, Commissioner, and August fifteenth would be fine for us. That would certainly at least give me time to try to set something up with the assessor.
If the other Commissioners would be amenable to that, that would be my recommendation, or if I need to make a motion to delay it until the August fifteenth meeting.
Probably would have to add an amendment to the first motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think the first motion has to be pulled, but fifty-five years above ground, you won't get it done by August fifteenth. Twenty-ninth maybe is more realistic.
Well, the appraisals are all in now. The good news is, is that there's full-blown appraisals that the assessors obviously-
But we need to know what Ben's staff could accommodate.
Oh.
Are you saying thirty days could be done, Ben?
Well, we haven't even had a chance to review those appraisals to see the content of them, and I guess I don't understand what, how that would change what goes to the county.
So just to understand process, your team will go over this, and then it'll go to the county. Your team will assess whether there should be any change either way, then it goes to the county to assess and vote on. If we vote for denial tonight, it just says this commission with the facts before us, would deny the, would deny the change in value.
Correct.
And then you will reassess all the data as long as it takes, and get it to the county, and then the argument would be, before the county, you may say a change, or you may still deny it, correct?
Right.
So Commissioner Strand, what he's wanting is thirty-day delay. That won't change process?
Well, other than what recommendation comes from you, that's the only thing that will change. The timing standpoint will probably be the same. And I guess, when I started by pointing out the types of appeals that can be filed, the informal appeal could have started that process with us before the abatements were filed. And I've suggested that to Mr. Hill, that once we get these abatements, that sets a motion in process. We need to notify the property owner within ten days of a hearing to be held within sixty days. Well, we're two years later. So if that's the way going forward, they would like to handle their appeals, we suggest that they come to us first before filing the abatements. We had no prior contact when we received these abatements, so that's why we had to act on it. The Cass County has requested that these be handled in an expedited fashion that is set in statute, and there's, they even sent me a opinion from the state's attorney granted back a lot of years ago at Cass County, spelling out a process recommending, once an abatement gets filed, even if it's in a municipality, that there be a set date at the county, so that these don't drag on so long.
So I have a motion before me to deny the reduction.
Yep, motion and a second.
And that's a second. I think, John, to expedite that, we'd vote on that motion, and then if you wanted to do a delay.
Well, I'm not going to pull the motion.
I agree.
Mayor Mahoney, I'd like to offer an amendment to include thirty-four, thirty-six, and thirty-seven, and to extend the review of this recommendation till our August twenty-ninth meeting, which would give, theoretically give the entities an opportunity to visit. I won't debate it, that'll be my move for an amendment for the moment.
Is there a second? Hearing no second, we will go to the first motion, which was to deny, recommended by assessment department, item thirty-four. Can I have a roll call?
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Gehrig?
Yes.
Strand?
No.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Suggested, Commissioner Strand, you may perhaps make your motion now for the next three items, if you wanted to.
Point of clarification, Mr. Mayor, there really are only three, aren't there? Thirty-five is off the table.
I'm sorry, thirty-five is off.
And so thirty-four has already been voted on.
Yes.
So that one's already decided. I would have preferred to include all three of them, if, as long as it's the same entities and owners, is that-
As you recommended in time, Robert's rules of orders, we had a motion on the table, so I could not change that to vote all three, so unfortunately, I could not do that. I can speak to thirty-six and thirty-seven, however.
Well, for the sake of giving it a try, I will move that we delay these, we continue this discussion until our August twenty-ninth meeting, which would give them, both entities, an opportunity to communicate with each other, to see if they have any input to change the recommendation that would come to us. So I'd move to delay it to the August twenty-ninth meeting with that intent.
Items thirty-six and thirty-seven, correct?
Exactly.
Is there a second? Hearing no second, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, for the sake of time, which might surprise people, it's seven forty-two. I'll combine the last three suggested motions, thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-seven, if that's okay. Eric?
Thirty-five is out, so it'd be just thirty-six, thirty-seven.
Okay, so thirty-six and thirty-seven, can I combine those into one, and I'll make the suggested motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Commissioner Strand.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Mahoney and Commissioners, and I want to acknowledge you folks for making this trip to Fargo. You know, that to me shows a level of interest, that whether or not it's timely or not, at least it shows that level of interest. And I'll say this, it's not just some of our business community and property owners of commercial properties that are concerned with our valuation processes. I can't tell you how many folks have told me in the last while, that's their, one of their biggest pressing, their biggest concerns in the city, so it's homeowners, it's commercial, and so I'm not sure, you know, I'm just acknowledging that, that I wish, like we are accommodating in our policies and practices for incentives and tax breaks for folks coming to town, that we'd also do everything we could for businesses already here.
And I'd just like to remind the Commissioner, you weren't here at the time, but we had over two hundred people here when Ben's assessing crew first went out, and he went back and revalued all those homes. And when we finally had our second meeting, we only had three people in the room. So I think our tax departments, our assessment department does a great job, and they do try to accommodate that. We don't want to deny good business. We hope that, Mr. Hill, you come by and talk to the people about what your valuations are, we'd be happy to learn from that. But we are a growing city, and we've had some great growth, so we do have some things happening that we did not expect. Roll call, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Gehrig?
Yes.
Strand?
No.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item forty-four?
No.
Thirty-eight.
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 If I may just put one thing on the record, the reason thirty-five was pulled off, we did do an appraisal on that, and we will continue to have discussions. We are, we work collaboratively, that's our motto, that's what we try to do. But thirty-five was pulled out because it's in a TIF district, and so we're still waiting on the amount of money that's left to be paid off on the TIF, and that was the only reason that we asked that that item be pulled tonight. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Moving on, recommendation from the Public Art Program.
Yeah, in your packet, you had a recommendation for the 2016 Public Art Program recommendations. Two of the programs are repeats of programs that we did in 2015, and item three in your memo talks about the public art possibilities, which is supplementary to the Public Arts Master Plan. We will see how that process goes in 2016 and see if it's worth redoing, but really, item three is really just to be complementary to the Public Arts Master Plan. I have slides if you need it, but I just thought I'd, if I'd like to answer any questions, I'd be glad to.
I have one question.
Commissioner Garret.
Why isn't this just part of the budget talks? Why are we doing it ad hoc or separate from the budget, since we're spending money?
It's a great question. So this is actually already budgeted in the 2016, so you approved that budget in 2015. Now, we're basically, based on our purchase policy, bringing it back forward for you to let you know how we're spending the, recommending to spend the twenty thousand.
Commissioner-
Mr. Chairman, I just want to comment, it's great. The hallways look great, the city staff have worked hard repainting the halls, and to have it all have a theme, it looks really nice. It's very impressive, and it's a great example of how we're using existing facilities. We're not building anything new, and hanging up some new photos, and hopefully advertising for local artists. It looks fantastic, and so I think it's a great addition. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I want to agree with you, Dave, and it does look really nice. I was just hoping that we would do this more from, you know, volunteer, or have private groups come and do these type of things. And like I've told Dan DeValle before, I would help fund, raise those funds. I'm happy to do that. I think people would be surprised to know that, but, you know, we, my wife and son and I enjoy artists in the community much as anybody else. We went to Little Mermaid, and it was awesome. So, you know, I would like to see more private dollars instead of public dollars in this, and that's why I'll be voting no. It does look great out there.
Nicole, did I ask you the question on how much private dollars are in the arts community? Do you have an answer to that, or would?
I would probably look to Mr. DeValle to answer that. I mean, quite a few. So for instance, item number two, public art projects, we did, we've done this for the last two years, so I've highlighted the Winter Arts Festival, which we've helped contribute to, the Shakespeare Fest and the Beethoven Fest. I think last year's program estimated to be about seventy-six thousand dollars. The city of Fargo contributed five thousand of that. The Madison Neighborhood Park Skate Park program, that's estimated to be about a two-hundred thousand dollar project. Ten thousand of that was from the Public Arts Fund.
Mr. Chairman, the arts are, have huge economic impacts. They create revenue for every, every business in town loves to have, when the symphony's performing, when Garth Brooks, who some might debate what kind of art that is, but country music is art, that was twelve-and-a-half million-dollar economic impact to Fargo. And so I'm telling you, the arts, if you talk to any of the bar owners, any of the restaurants, they love when there's activities going on, and so it is a great thing. And so I'm going to put a little bit of pressure on Bruce. We've been working on the Civic Center remodel, a performance center. If this, if this, this is down the road a little bit, but the potential of that, being busy every night, the people go out to eat, and they can walk back and forth, there's a lot of things to be excited about. And so there's a lot of things we don't have to spend money on, Tony. The, just as a city, we can be promoters, and to include art in our projects doesn't cost us money many times, so I totally agree with that. But I'm just telling you, if you talk to anybody in town, economics of arts are real. It's not a made-up thing, and so, like I said, you might debate whether Garth Brooks is an artist or not, if you like country music, but that economic impact of that, of those concerts was huge. All right, that's the end of my-
Commissioner Strand, you had something you wanted to say?
I just love hearing that, Commissioner Pepcorn, and others, and Mayor Mahoney and Commissioner, other Commissioners. If, it's no secret that the Arts and Culture Commission is rather new, and I think what I'd like to see it evolve to the point is where we don't have to micromanage the expenditures of money we budgeted for them to utilize. That, to me, is a process issue I'd put going forward, is why do we put them through this litmus test and not everybody else, and we wouldn't want to, you know, in my opinion. So it's been budgeted, and I'd like to see you be as creative and as effective as you can be, and grow it, and for the greater good of all of us.
Mr. Chairman, can I add one more thing? John, what I see is, we can be the conduit, the city, but it shouldn't be just us. We should, the, hopefully the private individuals in town would partner with us, and that's the thing, that I see us as being, not always being the only source of revenue, that private donors would actually team with the city, and we would be the conduit, but anyway, I think that is a good, a good way to look for down the road.
Just, I want to comment on one thing, and Nicole, maybe you can come back up here, but I think Commissioner Strand is used to the Native American Commission, which they're given a budget, they spend it as they see fit, it never comes back to this commission. So I think we've just talked today a little bit about the Arts and Culture Commission, and maybe how the governance structure should work, and I had asked that you work with your commissioner on that, and let's relook at that. Commissioner Grinberg, you're part of that, and you love governance, so if you could kind of ask the Commissioner Strand a question, why would this come back? If we give them a budget, they have a budget, and they have to deliver on the budget. They shouldn't necessarily come back to us, and every part of that budget they spend, but could we perhaps do that, or Jim, could you guys do that with Commissioner Grinberg?
We could take a look at that. Part of that is in the budgeting, this arts money, we didn't have anything very specific, and so then it's up to the department director to be approving all these purchase orders, and because there was a new program involved in some rather large amounts, the Native American Commission is giving out, you know, five hundred dollars here and five hundred dollars there, and so there are smaller purchases that don't require, you know, approval of the finance director or the city commission.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Commissioner Garret?
I've got one last quick point, and Dave, I agree, there is economic drivers that happen all- happen all, all around, like downtown, things like that, you know, like the ice rink downtown. We could have easily paid for that and said, look, the government brought people downtown, and they all ate and drank, and then they, you know, all these things. So I agree with you. We need to find ways where we can be the conduit, where we can provide space, for example. The airport, I tried to get up down there, didn't work out too well. But we can provide space for those things and not the dollars for it. So I just wanted to be able to say my side of it, I guess, if you will.
Well, the only thing I'd throw in there is down Rapid City, and their downtown plaza is beautiful with all the artwork up and down that city, and you see piles of people pouring into that community.
Chairman, I do plan on supporting this. I do agree with Commissioner Strand. You know, once we budget it, you know, we don't need to have twenty-minute dialogue on it at a commission meeting. And I think it's important that we, I think we're all kind of saying the same things, more private sector involvement, what's the strategy? Some of the room heard me say that before, and I'm going to keep saying it. What's our strategy, and how do we get there together? Call, call the question.
Should I have a motion?
I say move.
Oh. Second.
Second.
Call the question.
I'll call the question. Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
No.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. You guys have waited all night for this one. Election task force update, this Commissioner Grinberg and Garrick. Who's going to give the report, or we have a report?
Tony is.
And your desk is a memo that Commissioner Garrick and I put together that follows up on the action from July fifth, that puts a little more format and structure around the motion that was passed, which is on page two under topics. But in essence, what we're proposing here tonight is that former Mayor Bruce Furnas and former Commissioner Arlet Preston, as former elected officials sitting up in this chamber, be automatically assigned to this task force, that Bruce Furnas serve as chairman. And then further, that the task force would be comprised of a total of seven members, two of which I just mentioned, and the other five would each be recommended by one of us, so a total of five, is the seven members. And then the, the memo goes on to, you know, say that the appointment of the five commissioners would reflect Fargo's demographic population, and consideration be given to following organizations, such as the League of Women Voters, Chamber of Commerce, Home Builders, et cetera, as, as each of you, you know, weigh your mind on how, who to recommend. Commissioners Garrick and Grinberg will serve on the task force, but will be non-voting liaison members. Mr. Steve Sprague and Mr. Mike Mount Pleasure will be, work with the task force with their respective roles with election laws. And that up to two political science professors from tri-college member institutions in Fargo-Moorhead with residency in Fargo be part of the task force, but non-voting advisory only. And further, we say, we believe it would be appropriate that no current city commissioners, nor any recent city commission candidates, serve on the task force. The task force would be asked to establish regular scheduled meetings with the objective of proposing one or more recommendations to the Fargo City Commission by the first regular meeting in January two thousand seventeen. And then, in essence, covers the structure around this, and then the topics that we approve by, by voice on July fifth. And then so the recommended motion would be to prove for, approve the proposed, proposal for the establishment of the election and governance task force as presented, and request that Bruce Furnas and Arlet Preston serve on the task force as prior elected officials. Mr. Furnas serving as chairman, and his responsibility to be identify the process, coordinate the establishment of the membership of the task force. Once we name it, schedule initial and organizational meetings to undertake and tasks set forth in this proposal. Further, that this commission would appoint our five members by the August twenty-ninth meeting. And the logic then is they would start after Labor Day with their task force and report back their findings. Would ask or compliment Mr. Johnson as well for him framing the first context for Commissioner Garrick and I to have a discussion on this, to come forward with this proposal.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Thanks for, Tony, for writing that up the way you did. It made it a lot more, a lot more framework to it, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Strand, you're quiet, no comment?
Well, I, if I were to say anything, Mayor Mahoney, it would be to thank you both for providing this structure, and, and in a, in a balanced way going forward, so that it's not really politicized, but it's pretty open and inclusive. So thank you for doing that.
And it's typical of any of these committee meetings, although you two are the liaisons, they will be public meeting, and people can sit in on it, so any of the other commissioners can sit and listen and participate if they want. Any other discussion on that? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Now, construction project update, is that the last one?
I moved to it.
Could we just have April hand out those to us, please, and if commissioners have any questions they could ask?
I seconded Commissioner Garrick's motion.
Actually, do have one item that requires a motion.
Okay.
That I would like to touch on, if that's okay.
It better be important. You've got a tired commission.
Promise to be done by nine o'clock. How's that?
Yeah.
If you, if you flip in your update to page six, there is one item in there. Under, under city contracts, we do require...
That's fine.
Sorry. We do require that contractors who want to work on Sunday have to be approved by the city commission. And so we do have one such request in front of you tonight. It is related to the Rose Creek Flood Risk Management Project.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a move to approve that.
Second.
Any discussion? All those, no. Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Any other business? Mr. Strand?
Mayor Mahoney, members of the commission, if I might, so you don't hear, it's like a broken clock every meeting. If you could just add notation, if there are any injuries or deaths in the workplace relative to public projects, that would be, then, then I'd be satisfied on a regular basis.
Sure.
For that information, if you would. Thank you.
Have there been any deaths or injuries?
No.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Some motion to adjourn?
I move.
Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.